Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the... Okay, not yet? Okay. Take two then. Sound check. Check, check, check. Okay, we're good? Okay. Once again, thank... Good morning, uh, everyone. Uh, welcome to the February nineteenth Committee of the Hall. I'm your Chair, Councillor Castro Liu. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Um, joining us today in person, we have Councillor Davidson, um, Councillor Thompson, Mayor David West, Councillor Silivitz, and also Councillor Shu joining us online. We have Regional and Local Councillor, uh, Joe DePaula. Um, I saw... I saw Deputy Mayor Chen before. Uh, we kind of lost him, and also welcome Councillor Tree. All right, so, uh, council announcements. Do you have any council announcements for today? Um, Councillor Silivitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome to everybody watching us online and in chambers. I, I just wanted to take this opportunity, and I'm sure every member of council wants to do that, but I just want to thank our incredible Public Works Operations staff and bylaw staff who worked for days and days, uh, to help the city be cleared of an unbelievable amount of snow. So just on behalf of Ward Five and Ward Five residents, thank you. Um, Director Corisa is with us here this morning. Thank you. And, and I see a number of other faces here. Vlad, thank you for everything you do. Of course, every day, but in particular on, on, in, on days like these. I think it's, um, the work that our staff actually, actually do is, is actually quite remarkable. I, I, I'm just in awe, but thank you. Um, yes, there were problems. There's always problems, but if everybody could just be patient and understanding while we continue to clear the roads and, um, and make them a little bit wider, uh, we will, we will do that, and, uh, but this all takes time. There's an immense amount of white stuff out there. So thank you again to everybody. You are remarkable.
Thank you. Councillor Shu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone. Just, uh, same here. I just want to take a moment to thank all the city staff for their tireless effort to clearing the snow after the recent storm, which has been the most severe in the past twenty-six years. And a special thanks to the Director of Public Works, Frank Corisa, and your team for your hard work and dedication. I truly appreciate it, especially during such challenging conditions. So thank you for keeping our safety safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councillor Tree?
Okay, good morning. Thank you so much. As I quote for all council members here, even I received more than one hundred emails complaining, but I think, uh, we understand the operation teams so, so hard. This is maybe the, I heard in the twenty years, it may be the second biggest snow falling in only few days. So appreciate all the efforts. We know our operators working day and night through this tough five days is, is kind of hard work for everybody. Even I got a lot of complaints, but I believe, you know, I really appreciate it. I know, I understand totally how our operator works so hard. And also I got comment letters as well. I think I sent to, uh, a few of the senior management as well. So appreciate all the efforts. Another, uh, announcement is this weekend, we're gonna have our, uh, represent communities association are gonna organize the fifth years of the Mute Concert, so I'll be there performing as well. So all the money we, uh, fundraisers will be sent to Secus Hospital. Uh, it's, uh, Saturday at six P M. St. Mary Church. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Uh, thank you very much through you, the Chair. I also would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues here. Um, this was, uh, an incredibly significant, uh, snow event and back-to-back as well. Um, you know, the, uh, the preparation that, that goes into this and what we've seen happening, uh, and the type of information that was actually being, uh, presented that we were able to share on our social medias was, was, uh, exceptional. Um, I know that you can't possibly make everybody happy, uh, but all in all, I, I have to admit that at least in my ward, most of the residents were understanding. Uh, you'll always get the, the, the few that, you know, that, that's just how it is. But all in all, uh, thank you. Good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I, and I would like to, uh, just add that, uh, uh, Saturday was, uh, our Canada Flag Day, and I'm still wearing my Canadian pin because I'm Scott Thompson and I am Canadian.
Hey, here. All right, thank you. Next, we have Regional and Local Councillor, uh, DePaula.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I also want to, uh, send out a thank you. Uh, thank you to all of our residents. Uh, thank you to the residents of Richmond Hill for their patience that they showed throughout this storm event and their understanding with the city. Um, I had an enormous amount of communications, uh, through my office, and it wasn't, it wasn't complaints. It wasn't, uh, um, you know, the, the, we, we were all in this together and, and the, uh... The calls I got were encouragement, were, were questions, and, uh, you know, legitimately residents wanted to know, uh, how, uh... Uh, you know, how, how long would it be before their, their driveways were plowed or their windrows? And, and I also want to thank the, uh, the, our, our staff for the, for the new communication tools that we have and how, how, uh, nice it was to be able to refer, uh, residents to the Track My Plow program and how effective that was in, in letting residents know, uh, what, what, what they can expect. And, um, I, you know, I've been around for a long time, seen a lot of snow events. I, I, I don't think I've ever seen this much snow in this short a time, but, um... I, I, I've never seen such a significant event go so well in terms of the communication back and forth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Chen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to echo all my colleagues' comments. Uh, first thing, thank you for our public work staff and particularly the director with the update, uh, daily, and I think this is helpful. Uh, and I, I think the, uh, the key point is about, um, the speaker before me touched on is communication. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Hundred percent of, uh, contacts from, uh, residents to me are complaints. Hundred percent. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Having said it, uh, I already preface with, I understand our winter maintenance crew have been working very, very hard. We know. Uh, and I just want to share one positive comment, and I did say to the person I would share today with the Public Works, uh, our folks working so hard. And this individual told me that, um, she, she woke up at five A M. And she noted that there are actually, um, the, uh, the power trucks are working as, as well. Uh, she was so impressive. Apparently, there was, uh, uh, a supervisor who was just following, uh, those plows to make sure it's done right. Uh, so I did mention to her, please send those photos you took, uh, to, uh, to our city. And because given one compliment, I think it means a lot to all of us, particularly the winter maintenance school. So I want to, uh, express my sincere thanks, but also that, uh, thank you all the pa- uh, patient, uh, very patient residents. Uh, one aspect is touch on is communication. I think at some point in time, uh, we can look at whether, uh, some of those communication, uh, we could, uh, even have before anticipating storm can grow out, uh, perhaps, uh, to let people know, uh, earlier. And last but not least, uh, this week is actually the Heritage Week. Uh, so I know it's kind of hard to move around, uh, if all this snow, but, uh, just, um, cherish our heritage. And like Councillor Thompson said, let's cheer on the Canadian team tomorrow playing against who else? The United States to show we are together as Canadians. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Davidson?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I want to thank staff too, and the emails are still coming, and I keep sharing them, and, um, everyone's very professional, and I did actually have an occasion to run out and try to move my blue and green boxes when the windrow, windrow came, and the operator opened the door and talked to me, and they, like, he was so positive considering, you know, the, the way... And Oak Ridge has had a lot of snow before this, but I do want to ask the mayor, um, has Richmond Hills somehow angered Mother Nature that we would have two whammies? Anyway, um, I, I know some people are, are frustrated with it, but I do think we're doing the best we can. So I, I, I say well done to the whole city and, in particular, staff. So thank you.
Thank you. Any more announcement? Mayor West?
Well, sure, just since I've been, you know, no, we have not angered Mother Nature. Um, I, I've actually been speaking very nicely to her, so, um, you know, it, it's, it's all good.
Oh, that's it? Okay, thank you. All right, so, uh, yeah, I would also like to thank, uh, staff, and, uh, you know, despite all the complaints, you know, I, I also received positive, um, emails from residents and which I have shared with, uh, the director and, and other staff. Um, so thank you very much, especially, um, this particular residence. Um, he thanked us, she thanked, thanks that for, uh, for the windrow removal uh, because, uh, she got elderly parents, uh, at home. So thank you. All right, so moving forward, introduction of emergency time-sensitive matters. Seeing none. Adoption of the agenda. So we have seventeen agenda items, one presentation, one delegation, and one member motion. Can I have a mover? Thank you, Mayor West. All those in favor carry unanimously. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Seeing none. Identification of items requiring separate discussion. Anyone want to, wants to poll anything? Mayor West?
Uh, thank you. So I, I'd like just a quick question about eleven-five, municipal drinking water reporting. Uh, and I also just wanted, uh, to talk about eleven-point-eight. I think that's a really, uh, good news story. Uh, so I just want that to not pass without some discussion.
Sure. Councillor Tree?
Also eleven, armed. Eleven point twelve.
Halsey Clatch. All right, okay. Seeing none, no more? All right, so, uh, so, you know, going to consent, we have everything except eleven, eleven-point-five, eleven-point-eight, and eleven-point-twelve. Yeah, also, also eleven, three, four, and nine, and twelve-point-one. Thank you. All right. Okay, move to the adoption of the remainder of the agenda items. Councillor Silivitz, all those in favor? Carry unanimously. Thank you. All right, so, uh, let's move on to, uh, presentation. So we have presentation by our Director of Public Works Operations and, uh, Manager, Energy and Waste, Mr. Frank Corisa, and also Vlad Goll regarding the Blue Box Transition Update.
Thank you.
Welcome, Manager.
Thank you. Um, so, um, I'm the manager, Vlad Goll, uh, Energy and Waste, and today on the agenda, we're gonna talk about the Blue Box Program Transition. Today's agenda, we're gonna go over the... Oops, just getting used to the control here. So we're gonna go over the background of the current, uh, Blue Box Program, uh, the upcoming legislative changes, and then we're gonna go over the non-eligible Blue Box sources that will not receive collection under the new Blue Box Program. And then finally wrap up by looking at the necessary contract changes and the financial impacts related to the Blue Box Transition. So let's get started. So Richmond Hills Blue Box Program has been in place since nineteen eighty-eight, and Richmond Hill collects Blue Boxes on a weekly basis from apartments and houses in Richmond Hill. And Blue Boxes are co-collected in the same truck with organics in separate compartments. York Region takes the materials we collect and processes them, sorts them, and markets them for recycling. We've, we awarded the contract for recycling to Miller Waste since nineteen ninety-nine, and the current term goes from March or April twenty-nineteen to March twenty-twenty-seven with two optional one-year extensions. So under the current Blue Box Regulations, the program costs are split fifty-fifty between municipalities and producers. And in twenty-twenty-three, the net Blue Box cost after we received the producer funding was six-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Under the new Blue Box Regulations, uh, the program will transition from all municipalities uh, to producers and into a single collection system. Producers will then have full financial and operational responsibility for the Blue Box Program moving forward. And the intent of this provincial regulation is to provide incentives to producers uh, to reduce the waste and to make their, their products and packaging more recyclable. So who are producers that will take over the Blue Box Program? There are companies such as, uh, Coca-Cola, Costco, Walmart, and Loblaw's, and there are companies that supply Blue Box Materials into the Ontario market. Circular Materials is the nonprofit organization that will represent producers, also known as a PRO. And Circular Materials will be establishing collection contracts for collection, processing, and marketing the Blue Box Materials. So far, Circular Material has awarded recycling contracts, and so for Richmond Hill, Markham, and Vaughan, the contract is awarded to Miller Waste for recycling, and for the northern six York Region municipalities, it has been awarded to GFL. Staff have been providing council updates on the Blue Box Transition, with the latest one coming in November twenty-twenty-three, when council directed staff to report back with, uh, options and costs for non-eligible sources that will not be receiving recycling collection services under the new program, and also to pause the expansion of the Super Mailbox Recycling Program and bring back costs and additional information to inform a decision on the future of this program. So today, we're here with that additional information, with two staff reports in the agenda. Uh, one to deal with the service level recommendation and changes related to collection from non-eligible sources, which I'll explain in more detail later. And the second staff report, uh, require, it provides the required changes to the waste collection contract as a result of the Blue Box Transition. So non-eligible source, uh, so sorry, eligible sources under the Blue Box, uh, Transition are sources that will receive collection from producers moving forward after January first, twenty-twenty-six. And these include, as you can see on the slide, single-family homes, multi-residential buildings, schools, uh, retirement homes, as well as a specified number of public space containers. So the number of public space containers is determined by a formula which takes the population of the municipality divided by six-hundred for Richmond Hill, giving us about three-hundred-and-thirty-seven public space containers that producers will be obligated to collect from. On the flip side, there's the non-eligible Blue Box Sources which will not receive collection services from producers post-transition date of January first, twenty-twenty-six, and include industrial and commercial properties, non-for-profit municipal properties, um, daycares, as well as religious institutions. And on the right-hand side of the slide, you can see how mixed-use properties will be handled. So for example, um, the, on, on the top right-hand side of the slide, you can see, uh, mixed-use property where there's residential apartments above the businesses below, and this is very similar to our downtown core BIA. And in this scenario, the, the apartments above will receive collection from producers while the businesses will not receive collection. As a result of this, uh, we have to make some choices. So Richmond Hills Waste Collection Contract has been intended primarily for residential and municipal properties, but however, the year service has been extended to some non-residential properties, and these are currently collected along residential routes at a very low cost. But as I mentioned earlier, these non-eligible sources will not be collected by producers as of January first, twenty-twenty-six, and therefore, we must make some choices on whether or not these sources will receive collection at a higher cost. So staff have obtained quotes for continuing collection services for some of these non-eligible sources, and the cost is about thirty times higher than what we currently pay due to the loss of economies of scales. So on the table below in this chart, you can see the non-eligible sources, so including city facilities, businesses in the BIA, religious institutions, non-for-profit organizations, daycares, industrial, commercial, as well as super mailbox locations. And you can see the number we collect from as well as the total in Richmond Hills. So for example, for super mailboxes, we collect from three-hundred-and-seventy-five locations, while Richmond Hill has eighteen-hundred of these super mailbox locations. So staff have retained quotes, as I mentioned earlier, for continuing collection and have provided the following recommendations. So we're recommending to continue municipal Blue Box Collection Services on a dedicated route for the twenty-eight city facilities and the eighty-eight businesses in the business improvement area in the downtown core that currently receive recycling collection services. The rationale for this recommendation is that it's important that the city continues to lead by example by providing three-stream waste diversion options in city facilities. And for the businesses in the BIA, there are logistical challenges with waste storage and private waste collection access, as these businesses are landlocked and the ones we service from do not have access in parking lots or rear, uh, laneways. The cost quoted for these properties that we have obtained is ninety-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars per year. And the, we are, staff are also recommending to add a waste management fee for the eighty-eight businesses in the BIA of three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per year for each of those businesses to offset fifty percent of this increased recycling cost. Uh, the following staff recommendation is to discontinue municipal waste, uh, Blue Box Collection Services from the fourteen religious institutions, three non-for-profit, and six daycares. And we're also recommending to discontinue all municipal waste collection services, so including organics and garbage, from the sixty-four industrial and commercial properties we currently service. The rationale for these two recommendations is that the municipal waste collection program is only intended for residential and municipal properties with the small exemptions for the businesses in the BIA as per our waste bylaw. And the, the, the other rationale is that the cost is significantly increasing, so thirty times higher cost now that we will, once we start running, uh, dedicated routes to collect from these properties. And the, finally, uh, the properties represent a small subset of all, uh, similar organizations. So, uh, industrial properties, for example, there's, there's five, over five thousand industrial and commercial properties throughout the city. We only collect from sixty-four, uh, which, uh, results in, uh, inequity in service levels. We'll now look at the Super Mailbox Program and, and spend a little bit of time to provide a bit of background on this before the, we go over the options here. So Richmond Hill has approximately eighteen-hundred of these super mailbox locations, as you can see on the slide. And, uh, this number increases annually as new housing development reach occupancy, and these banks are added. Uh, we, we collect recycling from only three-hundred-and-seventy-five locations, which were the more problematic locations where residents had requested a recycling container. And these are collected weekly at a very low cost as the collection truck goes by the homes in that area and collects from here as well. On January first, producers, twenty-twenty-six producers will be obligated to only collect from three-hundred-and-fifteen locations, leaving the city with over sixty locations to service. And it's worth noting that the material collected in these recycling containers, the super mailboxes, is the materials that producers are obligated to collect under this new regulation and should be brought home by residents and collected at the curb at their own cost. The program, this recycling program, the super mailboxes, is unique to Richmond Hill, Markham, and parts of PL Region, and those municipalities are also reviewing, uh, the, their programs, the future of this program. So there's three options for the Super Mailbox Program. The first one is the status quo, so keep and continue to service all existing three-hundred-and-seventy-five super mailbox containers, but cap any further expansion due to the increased cost. So under this scenario, producers will collect from three-hundred-and-fifteen locations, and we would have to collect from the remaining sixty locations at a quoted cost of forty-two-thousand dollars, nine, forty-two-thousand-nine-hundred dollars per year. Um, while this option does allow the program to continue, does create a service inequity as new requests for additional recycling containers and new locations will not be, will not be met. Second option is to reduce the number of service super mailbox locations to the producer obligated number of three-fifteen. So under this option, we would remove sixty of the containers, uh, using criteria that we agree upon. So such as the usage of that recycling container, uh, the number of homes serviced by that super mailbox location, or when that container was installed. Um, this option allows for a scaled-back version of this program to continue at no cost to the city. However, it's only for select locations, and like option one, continues to create an inequity in service as anyone requesting a new recycling container, uh, will be denied. So option three is to cancel the supplement box, Super Mailbox Recycling Program and remove all containers. Uh, the rationale here is again that the materials should be recycled by residents in their residential Blue Boxes and collected at the curb by producers. Uh, this option involves no additional cost to the city and ensures equity of service throughout Richmond Hill. And staff are proposing to deal with litter complaints around super litter boxes by promoting the Canada Post Consumer Choice Program to, uh, reduce the amount of unwanted ad mail residents, uh, receive. Uh, will it be implementing a communication campaign to, to educate residents to bring this material home and set it out curb cipher collection? And dealing with, uh, complaints on a case-by-case basis and posting educational signage at problematic locations. And this option to cancel the program is staff's recommendation. We'll, we'll now switch, uh, and look at the necessary changes to our Waste Collection Contract. Uh, so staff have been negotiating with Miller, uh, the required changes to our contract to remove recycling collection services effective January first, twenty-twenty-six. Um, currently, recycling and organics are co-collected in the same truck in different compartments, and you can see that in the picture below. And this results in, uh, cost savings and efficiencies, so lower fuel, equipment, and labor costs. And however, moving forward, these, uh, streams will be required to be collected in different streams, uh, in different trucks, sorry. And this means that the, we will lose the co-collection efficiencies, resulting in a higher collection cost for the organics of six-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars per year. Based on the benchmark we've done, the amended contract price, despite this increase in the organics cost, continues to provide a good value for the services provided. And this slide provides the financial impact of the Blue Box Transition. So after the, we lose the producer funding of, uh, seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, there's a cost avoidance to the city from the removal of recycling of eight-hundred-thousand dollars, which is offset by the increased cost of organics collection of six-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars and further offset by the cost to collect from the selected non-eligible sources, which I mentioned earlier. Uh, and, and that's ninety-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars for the city facilities and the businesses in the BIA. Um, this cost is offset by a revenue that will come in if the, if the waste management fee for the eighty-eight businesses in the BIA is approved. And so that works out to about thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars and a further cost avoidance from no longer providing flu, free Blue Box exchanges, and, and that's about thirteen-thousand dollars per year, resulting in an overall annual cost avoidance of a hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars. Um, so our current contract with Miller goes until the March twenty-twenty-seven, and staff are recommending, as part of this staff report in front of you, uh, exercising the optional one-year contract extension with the proposed amendments discussed here. Uh, this will allow us sufficient time to procure a new long-term waste collection contract, uh, starting April first, twenty-twenty-eight. And staff are recommending to proceed in twenty-twenty-five with a request for proposal based on the following timelines. So the request for proposal and contract, the development will take six months, another six months for the procurement process and, and award of the contract, and then the successful vendor will require two years to procure the new waste collection trucks needed. So moving on to our next steps, we will build on work already underway to implement the communication plan to inform residents of the transition of the Blue Box Program, and of course, the impact in non-eligible sources of the service level changes discussed here. Uh, the Waste Collection Contract will, with Miller, will be amended to reflect the changes here by Q-three, twenty-twenty-five, and we'll be implementing the service level changes by January first, twenty-twenty-six, which is our transition date. Uh, staff will develop an RFP to procure a new long-term waste collection contract and award that contract by Q-two, twenty-twenty-six. And finally, staff will work with Circular Materials and with Miller to ensure a smooth transition of the Blue Box Program. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Manager. Um, I'm sure we all have lots of questions and comments. Uh, shall we start the, uh, question period, or shall we move over just to the delegation? I'm, what I'm thinking is maybe we save it when we bring forward the items. Yeah, I, I think we should wait because it's gonna be a long question period. Uh, we have a delegation here. I think we should move forward to the delegation. Okay, can we have a quick motion to receive the, uh, the presentation, Councillor Silivitz? All those in favor? Thank you. Carries? All right, so next, uh, let's move up to the, uh, the delegation. We have, uh, Mr. Ross of Carroll, eighty-two Duncan Road, regarding item eleven-point-nine, two forty-three sixteenth avenue. Welcome, sir.
Greetings, greeting, David West. It's been thirty-eight years. You did my wedding photos. Oh, and you're just as good-looking as you were then. Okay, um, I, I had, uh, uh, my lawyer, Joseph Rogilio, that was gonna be speaking on my behalf here today. Okay, um, I I had uh uh my lawyer, Joseph Rogilio, that was gonna be speaking on my behalf here today. He uh is vacationing and he was supposed to be back yesterday. He's in Texas in hospital for medical treatments. Uh, he, something happened. I I don't know what. I spoke to the law firm. They didn't wanna say much. So uh he's, he he hasn't been able to uh come here this morning to speak with regard to why I'm here. The reason why I'm here is because I own eighty-two Duncan Road uh in Richmond Hill. It's the very last property siding onto the ravine. And I bought that property about twenty-three years ago, maybe twenty-four, as an investment for my family, for my kids. Because I knew that there was gonna be eventually backlotting happening and smaller development uh all around. Uh, eighty-two Duncan Road is made up of a hundred-foot frontage by three hundred and twenty feet deep. There's development that uh has occurred to the uh east of me. Uh, Arcfield Development has brought a road in and they're doing infill. I was dealing with uh Arcfield uh for six years, and they were supposed to bring that road right to my property so that I would be allowed access to service a couple lots. And uh they were also indicating that they were interested in buying the back part of my land. And there was a hiccup. It was the uh uh the floodplain, the environmental. So uh what I did was I hired uh, I hired uh Burnside Engineering, their water resource management company, and uh Lana Russell, uh she did a mapping of my property. And uh she stated that there is developable land at the point where they were gonna bring me my road and that I did have land that could have been developed. Uh, from that point, uh, Arcfield decided to uh change the 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 pattern of the road. And uh they basically maximized the yield on their land and they saved a ton of money by shortening the road. The road was supposed to come to my property, and there were supposed to be three houses backing onto the ravine on my property. And I was prepared to sell that to them. And uh what they did was they shortened that road a hundred and twenty-three feet. And they've built uh, they're building now three uh uh forty-foot semis, uh no, forty-foot ravine lots. They're calling them ravine lots. First they thr- first they changed the road pattern and uh cut me out of the development. I basically got landlocked. They landlocked me. And to put uh, to put fuel on the fire, they've been advertising those three properties that are backing onto my property as ravine lots, which they are not ravine lots. And uh I've had people prior to the snow coming out there, looking at them, walking onto my property because they thought it was ravine property. So uh I'm very upset for that. And I've lost the opportunity for redevelopment from the uh east. And uh Lana Russell indicated to me that I should talk to a planner. So I reached out to uh Murray Evans. And I showed Murray my property and I said, Murray, uh, what can I do with this? And uh Murray said to me, what you can do is you can approach the development to the north of you, which they have built eleven stacked townhouses. And they come all the way back down to my property and they're within ten feet of my lot line. And the road comes right down to me. And Murray suggested that I try to get an easement from them to extend that onto my property where I have the developable land that I could build either a block of three townhouses or a set of semis. Uh, I would love to get at least a set of semis. My uh, my daughter Christina and my son Matthew, they have no no home. And I'd like to build them a semi each if if this would be possible. So I'm here to ask if if it would be possible that uh Sunrise uh would be willing to work with me in allowing an easement so that I can bring down that road so that I can accommodate at least minimum two semis or three stacked townhouses, similar to what they've done. They indicated to me when I was speaking with
I would like to ask you to wrap up, please, Mr. For Carol, because you already passed five minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, I spoke with Arthur from Sunrise Developments and he basically indicated to me that he was interested. I uh, I said, okay, uh, can we meet? And uh he basically refused to meet with me. And uh here I am. I don't know what to do.
All right. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna bring this back to council. This is eleven points nine. Um, what six, Councilor Shu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ross, for joining the uh committee meeting and share your concern with us. It sounds that the issue you're facing is related to a dispute between your property and the existing construction. Rather than the draft plan of the condominium application and this item. So based on my understanding, you are not going to oppose the condominium application. It's not related to the item, what we're talking about. So if that's the case, I would have you to to discuss further of you offline and see how can I assist you. But I need more details, like uh any any contract you have signed with somebody and uh the past communications with the staff. I need more more details to get to get a better understanding on your case. So let's talk offline and if I can provide you any assistance.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Fair, sorry, uh, we cannot go back and forth. Uh, you have your five minutes.
That's all my comments because I uh I'm not frankly, I'm not so familiar with this uh situation, and this is the first time I've heard about this. So I would talk to Ross offline.
Understand. Okay, yeah. What what in front of us is the approval of this of the uh the draft plan of condominium. So I think it's somewhat not related, as Councilor Shu alluded to. So um he will talk to you or staff will talk to you after the meeting. All right. Um, Councilor Service, you, would you like to uh comment?
Thank you, uh, and I'll move the recommendations.
All right.
If uh unless Councilor Shu wants to do it.
Yes, uh, yes, I would like to do this and move it forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have um Councilor Shu moving the eleven point nine. All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and and I was, if if I may.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Councilor Silvitz.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for stepping forward and speaking with us. Um, I appreciate your concerns, but unfortunately, what you're speaking about is private property problems. The city, we are not involved in something like that. So um having your lawyer, unfortunately not being able to be here, that is definitely the person that you, in my opinion, that you need to be speaking with in order for for them and the lawyers or the other, the property developers to figure out what is going on here. Unfortunately, as a municipality, we 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 can't um impose any regulations here. This is private property, and all we can do is we can, we can speak to the staff reports, which are in front of us right now, which is a completely different issue as to what you are speaking to. And again, I understand and I sympathize with you, but it's private property and um the municipality in this particular instance has no has no sway. So um I I just, I urge you to continue your conversations and also with your local councillor. I think it's, I mean, he can certainly advise you. Um, but um other than that, that that's that's about all that we can do as a municipality um uh to to address your concerns. But thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, Mayor West.
Yeah, thank you. And so um just quickly, I I'm happy to chat with you with um Councilor Shu uh at some point after the the meeting and and we'll explore this a little bit um more. Um, I think there's a lot going on here that's probably beyond the scope of this discussion, but but I'm I'm happy to chat with you about it. And and you know, as I said, it's probably best to have somebody with y- your uh understanding of your issue specifically, like as in your lawyer, um, to be able to uh, you'll get walk you through it as well. So um we'll we'll connect at some point afterwards. We can, we can talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor West. Yeah, we understand you you must be very confused, but uh as the mayor mentions, uh, the local councillor and mayor will reach out to you to discuss your your issue. Yeah, thank you for coming. Thank you. So we passed the motion, right? I need a vote. Okay. I need a vote of eleven point nine. Okay. Moved by Councilor Shu. All those in favor? Kerry unanimously. Thank you. All right, so next, uh, we're gonna go back to the uh the blue box collection uh changes. Eleven eleven point three and eleven point four. Um, this is two different items. So I would suggest that uh we deal with one at a time. Um, even though they're all related, but uh uh let's let's bring forward eleven point three for now. We have Mayor West.
Okay, um, actually, after I put my hand up, uh, the the recommendation is the staff recommendation that will that will be moving. Is that correct? The, okay. All right, so I'll move that. But um I had just had a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Um, so can I just go back to the slide that talked about the cost implications of the of the thing? I think it was a hundred and seven thousand dollars to the good.
Mm-hmm.
Can we just look at that for a minute? Wait. Okay. So th- this is excellent, and and I think it's very clear. Um, so what this says is after all of this that we've gone through over however many years we've been talking about this, and it's been almost the entire ten years that I've been on council. And all the iterations and all of the lobbying that we've talked about to to make this transition, we're going to save, wait for it, a hundred and seven thousand dollars. That's it. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So that's the hundred and seven thousand relates to the the member, the motion that we're going to be dealing with in at the end. When that motion passes, we will, we will save a measly hundred and seven thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, that is unbelievable to me. I mean, the opportunity here for the provincial government to have just paid that municipalities to do what we're always doing and and instead of giving us seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, give us the full amount uh is like that's where the the rubber would have really met the road and we would have really seen a benefit. This is, you know, that is so close to zero i- in the grand scheme of things, that this is actually, in my opinion, almost downloading of of, you know, another responsibility yet again from the province. I I'm flabbergasted at this. Plus, on top of that, we're going to have to be in a situation where in order to achieve even a net zero, we're going to have to be um taking some of the services away that we've currently been uh offering um and or charging for it. So I I just want to be on the record as saying, I've been following this now for years, and I'm completely uh stunned that we're in the place that we're at right now, and I really think it's a missed opportunity um for the province to have done the right thing and really helped out with recycling. Um, I I don't think this is it. But given that we are where we are, um, can I just ask? So under this new regulation, we have a, we we have how many locations that are included in our kind of free pickups?
Um, through your uh councillor, um, and chair, uh, are you talking about public space location?
Yeah, or or any, cause like that could include our facilities, right?
Uh, no, it's the public space locations will be just containers on street containers located on residential collection routes. And therefore, the super mailbox containers uh qualify. But city facilities are considered non-eligible and will not be collected by producers.
Okay, so what are we doing with our with our free pickups then? Like generally speaking, which locations are gonna get pickups?
So the twenty-four containers in the downtown core will get uh collection from producers that we've included. And then the remaining locations, uh currently, the recommendation is to cancel a super mailbox program. And we can look at future opportunities to use those free allocated containers, but currently we don't have any other containers except the downtown core ones and the super mailbox containers.
So what about locations like, like, for example, there's one at the Mill Pond right beside the road? Will will containers like that be be picked up for free or is that because it's in a park? That'll be up to us.
Uh, that that's a good question. Um, those containers are part of our parks recycling and garbage collection done in-house with Q P staff. And we collect both streams at once, so we go in there, grab the garbage and recycle at the same time, separating two compartments in the truck. Um, but because they're in a park, they're not eligible for progression from producers, so we'll continue collecting them with.
Right, and this only applies to recycling material, not garbage.
That's right.
Okay. All right, um, just out of interest, and I I, we didn't cover this in the presentation, but I thought I heard at one point in time that the the material that comes out of super mo- mailbox location is significantly contaminated with like dog poo. Right? Is that, is that still the case?
Through you, uh, Mr. Chair, yes, uh, there is some contamination levels. The the last audit we did was quite a while back, but it did show anywhere between ten to twenty percent contamination, mostly uh dog poop, where people are just putting it in there. Um, but that's not a bad contamination level considering curbside blue boxes are at around twenty to thirty percent contamination levels.
So what do they do right now when they collect a a container that's contaminated like that, like at a super mailbox? What I I I presume they don't pick it out. It it just goes in the garbage, right?
Uh, well, that's correct. So they don't pick it up uh or sort it at the curb, but it goes to the York Region Recycling Facility where that material would basically fall out of the uh conveyor lines through certain processes that they have there to sort out any garbage and small amounts like that. So paper and uh any cardboard would continue on to recycling and the garbage, the contamination levels will be dropped off through numerous processes at that sorting plant.
Okay. All right, well, uh, so I've been, I I've spoken to staff a number of times about this, so I I don't really have any other questions. Um, I I'm I'm happy to move the motion. I I agree with the staff recommendation. I mean, there is a part of me at Super Mailboxes where, I mean, you know, I get why we did it and and I, you know, I think that was a good opportunity to make sure that our our community stays clean. But at the end of the day, I mean, really, we have a a well-developed recycling program at their house. All they have to do is take the the material from the super mailbox and deposit it at their house. It's not heavy. It can be done easily. It's really not that difficult. So I think that, you know, given the situation that we are now under, I don't think we have really any uh the responsible choices for us to do what's uh in this um motion. Um, but one thing I would ask, though, is I I mean, we are gonna see some litter at at some of those problematic locations. And I would really like to see our staff working very um aggressively to communicate with signage at those problematic locations to encourage people to do the right thing and to take the their garbage home rather than throwing it on the ground because it's it's, you know, it's not responsible citizenship to be littering the neighborhood like that. But um I think we need to apply some peer pressure to make sure that as much as possible, we keep those areas clean and get and it let people know. I mean, you you need to take the the recycling material home, put it in your recycling boxes at home and, you know, keep our our community clean. And I think if we have we mount a campaign that's aggressive enough that we can really apply the peer pressure to to get that to happen. So anyway, thanks for the work on this, and I'm happy to move the motion as it as it was recommended.
Thank you. Next, we have uh. Thank you. Um, Councilor Silvitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Manager Gau, for your in, for your in very good presentation. And I also want to thank you and other members of of P W O staff who have met with all members of council and have have had in intensive discussions with us. Um, I I I'm on the same page as as the mayor and I I will um also agree to these recommendations. Um, we've been working on this for a very, very long time. And um, yeah, at least since uh we've been on council, uh, ten, eleven years. So um uh, it's finally before us, so we we have to, we have to respond. But there is just a couple of things I would like to clear up through you, Mr. Chair. Um, to our manager, this is as a result of provincial legislation. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, uh, introduced in twenty twenty-one by the province.
Thank you, sir. So that is very, that's a very, very important piece of information for our residents that we are mandated by the province once again uh to comply with their legislation. And and as we always say, creatures of the And and as we always say, creatures of the province, of four hundred and forty-four municipalities of us, uh, within the province of Ontario, we are bound by what the province regulates and mandates. So so this is not just Richmond Hill making decisions to to do something. Um, uh, it is all, all par, all municipalities across the board who are going to be faced with certain, with similar, if not the same issues. And I agree with what uh, uh, Mayor West said, that there's no question this is downloading. Once again, the province is downloading um, issues uh, to the municipalities, and it puts the municipalities in an incredibly diff- difficult situation. We are in the middle of a provincial um, election, and I urge our residents to keep that in mind. Um, I do agree that communication here is going to be um, key. Uh, it is the, it's also the the the, the containers at the super mailboxes that, to me, is the concern. The rest, I I know we, that's not a problem at all. We can do. But there will be, I I think there will be some pushback. But I I do believe that if we, if we are very clear in our communication uh, with our residents, that they understand why this has happened. And um, I believe that signage agreed is excellent, an excellent idea. Um, signage placed on uh, on on the property, the public property side of the super mailboxes where we can put something, um, I think would go a long way to explaining to residents that, please take your, please take your mail home with you. Um, and don't litter. Keep keep your, keep your uh, neighborhoods uh, clean. Because that that's what they want at the end of the day. When they, when they contact us and say, oh, there's such a mess there, well, who made it? So responsibility must also lie with the residents. And I I really think they will comply once they fully understand the 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 problem. Um, the, and in keeping with what I was just saying, it's also important for our residents to understand that that slab of concrete and that super mailbox does not belong to us. It's, it belongs to Canada Post. So I had a number of calls come into me over the weekend about the snow, asking if we could please remove the snow from the super mailbox platforms because they can't get to their mailboxes. And I had to say that it's not our property and that Canada Post clears that, not us. So um, it's the same thing. We need everybody to understand that this is Canada Post's property, not ours, and they are in, they are in control of of that property, and it is the province that has pushed this down to us. Um, that's about all signage. I spoke about signage. So um, thank you again. Um, this has been years in the making and years coming to us to actually be here. So um, I remember in twenty, in twenty fifteen, Mayor West and I, then councillor West, we sat in the the City of Toronto Council Chambers, and we formed a a specific group um, and to to discuss this. And um, that's many, many, many years ago. So uh, we are here, and now we just have to deal with it as best we can and ensure that our residents understand um, uh, what this, what the situation is and why. And we will deal with it as best as is possible to the extent that we can. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So we have a speakers list. Um, next, we have councillor Davidson and then councillor Thompson.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Um, do we know will green, will blue boxes be put out the same day as residents will put out blue boxes? Like, will blue box still be every other week only? And green boxes will be every other week only, but maybe not on the same day? And then on the weeks where you have garbage, blue box and green box, that might not be on the same day?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's a very good question. Um, so far, we don't have a hundred percent certainty, but we do believe nothing will change in terms of our collection schedule. We have not been informed of any changes, so blue boxes will continue to be collected along with organics and the same day, and of course, every other week with garbage. Uh, we don't expect these changes will happen in the current contract that C M or Circular Materials has awarded. If any changes will happen, it will it will be in their next contract, which will be in about six years from now.
Thank you. Um, and through you, Mr. Chair, so um, do we know will the blue boxes? If my blue box breaks, then now it's gonna be replaced by, is it GLC? Is that the name of the company? Anyway, my blue box breaks, do I still come to Richmond to pay for a new blue box? Or do I go to some provincial organization to get my new blue box? And do we know what those blue boxes are gonna look like? Are they gonna be the great big ones with wheels that take up the whole garage? Are they gonna be the little blue box that we all have?
Again, thank you. Uh, good question. And so um, currently, there, they haven't announced any changes to the blue boxes, so it will still be the same blue boxes for Richmond Hill, the same sizes. They're not moving to carts or other sizes. But however, the city will not be providing blue boxes. Are there new ones or free exchanges, since it will no longer be our program? The blue boxes that residents have will continue to be used until they break. And at that point, Circular Materials, who represents producers, ha, will be through Miller Waste, providing residents with new containers. Um, we're not sure if it will be at a cost. We do suspect it will be at a cost for replacement or for for sure for buying new ones. It will be at a cost, but residents will be buying those containers from Miller. And more information on where and how they will get them, if it'll be online home delivery or if it'll be a pickup in Miller's yard, um, yet to come. We do have a website, a webpage on our website that's dedicated to the blue box transition, and all this information will be posted there as it becomes available and communicated to our residents.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Will there be an opportunity for staff to press the uh, new picker-uppers of the blue box to have a complaint line? Because when residents see the blue box get whipped onto the ground and it cracks, and now they're gonna pay for that, and I'm not blaming the person doing the collection because they've got so much to do. I I see them still collecting at eight o'clock at night now. So it's not an easy job. But when a resident watches somebody else crack their mail, their blue box, and then they're told, oh, yeah, you you have to pay for that, we really need whoever's doing the blue boxes to take those complaints, because I can tell you, they're, they come.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, yes, there, there will be a complaint line. We have been informed. Uh, that complaint line will be actually Miller Waste Customer Service Department that will be handling those calls. And we will work with Access Richmond Hill to ensure any calls about blue boxes miscollection or, you know, driver feedback, as you mentioned, uh, will be redirected to Miller Waste post January first, twenty twenty-six, with an explanation as to why this is, you're, you know, you're speaking Miller Waste as opposed to the city.
Thank you, um, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanna, I have a couple of other questions, but the hypocrisy of this in terms of this is some environmental, you know, win that we're gonna get our plastics picked up when we're putting twice as many trucks on the road with grease and oil and diesel. I mean, it's, it's, it blows your mind to think that there's no way we could have done this that would be more expensive or more difficult. And I don't know who's, I I can't imagine that picking up the blue box isn't gonna be, by a separate entity, isn't gonna cost Ontario taxpayers in some way. So I I mean, out to the world there, this, this is a ridiculous idea, ridiculous program. Um, over to the super mailboxes. My understanding is most of the, through you, Mr. Chair, most of them are in, most of them are in Oak Ridge as Ward One. So if we get rid of the super mailboxes, that's a bit of a hit for Ward One. But I do wanna ask if in new neighborhoods like Gormley, um, you know, there's, I think it's called, I'm trying to remember, that William Logan Drive, there's hundreds of super mailboxes because that neighborhood's not finished yet. Is it possible that we could just temporarily have blue boxes in those areas? Because en masse, you can add with a lot of garbage, especially on windy days. And I I mean, it's fine to say, let's educate people. But I've seen people just put their junk mail on top of the mailbox, and then the wind blows. Is there any way to provide delivery to neighborhoods if it's a new neighborhood with loads of of boxes in one location?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So uh, if you wanted us to do that, a council would have to make that recommendation. Right now, we're recommending that the super mailbox program be terminated.
Right. Okay, well, we have a week to think about it still. So thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I know I'm gonna seem like the skunk at the party, but I absolutely don't agree with B I A getting any, any um, extra treatment and getting subsidized for their garbage. No one in my word, my businesses in Ward One pay for their own garbage. Um, I guess a couple of places are gonna lose pickup. Um, the advantage of being downtown, which you're talking about, it's difficult to collect because it's a compact area. But when people leave the theater, they walk across the street to the businesses. Like, there's an advantage to be in that high-density area. And I guess there's a cost. So I I I can support everything except the B I A subsidy. That's just not fair to all the other businesses. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Next, councillor Thompson, and then Deputy Mayor Chen.
Uh, thank you very much, through the chair. I also want to thank you for the presentation. Um, I do wanna tap on a couple of things. I wanna make sure that, uh, you know, what we're, our understanding is is correct. So when it comes to the uh, uh, the pickups now, we have a co-collection where blue box and organics are being picked up on the same day. And if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, that's not gonna be the case moving forward. I just wanna confirm that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, they they will be collected on the same day, but in different trucks. Currently, they're collected on the same day, but with the same truck in two different compartments. So that way, they're maximizing their efficiencies in terms of the number of staff doing that route and also the fuel and the equipment cost. So moving forward, that's not allowed anymore under the new regulations. So we will be running the organics truck with Miller Waste, and Miller Waste, under a different contract with Circular Materials, will be running a different recycling truck on the same day. So two trucks now.
Uh, thank you, through the chair. So the producers that are now responsible for this, even though they're using the exact same vendor that we've been using, they're forcing them into two separate trucks, more staff, more greenhouse gas emissions, and they think this is a good thing. Uh, I'm dumbfounded. Okay, thank you for that. Um, the uh, the separation of business to to residential. And and I don't think this is unique to the B I A. This, this is gonna happen elsewhere in the, in the city, where you have businesses on the lower part of a building, residential above. I'm not seeing how that's going to work. I mean, you know, if the residents have to put their blue box out front, and it happens to be Young Street or or wherever it is, uh, but there's a business that is at that ground level, I I don't know how that is going to work. Has there been any indication to you how that's going to work?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So so that is part of the reason for our recommendation that the the city will collect the B I A uh, from those idiot businesses, the B I A recycling. Because part of the problem is it is gonna be mixed up. There's nowhere for the businesses to have um, their own pickup like there are for most businesses. And and uh, we've seen the City of Toronto, for example, do the same thing where the the, where there's sort of two-tier uh, businesses, residential. Those are the ones the City of Toronto is continuing, um, but getting a cost recovery from those businesses.
Uh, uh, thank you, uh, and through the chair. So again, like I say, this is not unique to the B I A. You have businesses in Oak Ridge's on Young Street where there's residents above. Has the producer indicated how they're going to figure it out?
And through you, Mr. Chair. So um, a lot, a lot of those places, we currently have actual policies in place for. So if a building, and this is the new trend, is, you know, condominium buildings with the retail at the bottom. And for those ones, we require separate waste storage room for the retail. We don't collect that waste already. It's only in the B I A where we do this. And separate loading space. So if it's a big enough development, they will have a separate loading space for the retail garbage, separate from the residential one, which producers will then be able to take advantage of and just go to the residential loading space, collect from the residential ones. So most of these businesses outside of B I A will have some kind of alleyway in the back where they have their own waste containers. Um, and and like I said, the residential piece has its own containers and loading spaces. Uh, B I A is different because they are landlocked, and uh, the issue is the waste set out at the curb is mixed with residential because there's no space to separate the setouts, no separate loading spaces. And therefore, if there's a mix-up between producers on not, and they they don't, they think something is from a business, they leave it behind. It's in the B I A core, and it becomes quite an issue in terms of our clean street policy. Um, so therefore, this recommendation to be able to keep that street clean and and avoid this confusion where the separation of setouts in separate loading spaces is really not possible.
Okay, and thank you, through the chair. I I I think we can all see that this will just be ripe for abuse in both directions. Residents are gonna be throwing stuff into the businesses' bins and vice versa. So um, yeah, that's a sad situation. Um, specified public spaces. Uh, so we're not allowed to use that for our facilities. We can't use it for parks. Where exactly can we use those? Uh, what do we call specified public spaces?
Yes, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So the uh, regulation speaks to the waste container being next to a street or sidewalk and uh, being on a waste or already on a residential collection route. So basically, street containers, the downtown core ones, uh, we collect from those twenty-four ones along Young Street. We collect from the residential and businesses in that area and pick up from those containers at the same time. Similar to the super mailbox ones, they're collected as on the residential route for that neighborhood. So those would be the ones that we can use towards this uh, producer obligation of public space containers. The the ones that are already in the parks, they will not walk into a park. So um, the fact that they're already collecting on a separate parks' collection routes makes them non-eligible.
Right, thank you, and through the chair. So have we already determined where we may want to use these three hundred and thirty-seven bins?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, no, we we have not determined. Um, and it might be a a a long-term process that we're designing things a little bit differently, where we're placing the recycling bins in the future so that we can take advantage of our allocated use. Um, so for example, uh, where we put ones, uh, recycling bins at trailheads might be something that could in the future be picked up. But we have, right now, as Vlad said, the only eligible ones we have are the B I A and the super box.
Okay, so uh, thank you. And and through the chair, if I understand, using the the formula about the mail, the super mailboxes, we were eligible to have three hundred and fifteen locations uh, for the super mailboxes. Is that correct? Um, that, just in terms of eligibility?
Yeah, three hundred and thirty-seven and minus the twenty-four, so three hundred and thirty-seven containers they'll be obligated to collect from based on our population. And twenty-four of those containers will be used for the downtown core, leaving three fifteen for the super mailbox program as an option.
I see, so so we are using that three thirty-seven or or, well, when we talk about the three hundred and fifteen, that's where the, it was coming from, was from that three hundred and thirty-seven originally. So we're not talking two separate numbers. Okay, that was my confusion because I thought we were talking two separate numbers. In which case, I was gonna say, well, if we haven't determined where the three thirty-seven is, why didn't we bump up from that three fifteen? But if it's all part of the same number, now I get it. Um, I I think that's all, you know, well, I shouldn't say that. I- in terms of uh, contamination, um, it seems to me that, uh, you know, this whole initiative, and this has nothing to do with the folks standing here today, but it's, it's going to take us backwards, uh, in my opinion. You know, we're gonna see much more stuff ending in the landfills now than what we had before, uh, no matter how much marketing we do. People are not going to, you know, you know, sure, you might get a small percentage that will say, yeah, I should take, bring that home from the uh, super mailbox and put it in my blue bin at home. But the reality is, that's not what's gonna happen. It is gonna be blowing around out there. It is gonna create more problems for us in cleanup. And I've already had people complaining because I put a post out about the cleanup days, and they're saying, I pay taxes. Why aren't you guys doing it? How can you expect us to come and do the job that we're already paying you to do? And I'm like, are you kidding me? But that's the reality. People are are thinking that because people, you know, they should be able to just litter, and we should be able to take care of it. Those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, before I go to the next speaker, I'd like to pass the the chair to councillor Thompson for a few minutes because I got a nature call. Um, so the next speaker is councillor Chen, Deputy Mayor Chen, and I should be back in time, so.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I haven't said anything yet, but, uh, but I understand, nature calls. Mr. Chair, um, I would support the recommendation moved by Mayor West. But like him, um, I find the whole process is very frustrating. Uh, I've only been around beginning by 19th year on council here. And I think that all comes back to who does what. But before I, I make my further comment and seeking clarification, I would like to really, um, thank all the staff, including the presenter today, uh, that, about the preparation, uh, based on the staff report. Not very often we have that many pages of staff report on a single subject. There's that been, uh, a lot of work have gone behind it. And I appreciate the challenge. Next, I'd like to move on, um, a question first. And Mayor Pino, uh, it's disappointing to see that it's page 11, uh, the staff report also slide. At the end of all this, $107,000. I'm also wondering that, um, we speak so much about communication. A number of my colleagues spoke about it. Now, this particular money we are talking about, uh, with that, I don't know who can answer this, maybe a city manager. We all talk about communication, communication, communication. Would that mean that communication department might have to incur extra, um, expenses in launching the, um, whatever the good term is, a very visible marketing communication scheme between now and January? Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, councillor Thompson.
Hey, Commissioner Steele?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, as you'll note from the, uh, the note at the bottom of slide 16, we said there is $107,000 in savings, but actually some of that will need to be used for the communication, uh, program that will go along with this.
Thank you for the answer. That's precisely what I wanted to bring out, uh, is that it's actually no savings, in a sense. Hardly any savings for, um, getting not just Witcher Hill, but Minnesota party going through all that. And, uh, hopefully, um, the Boisso candidates, uh, our future government will take a good look at who does what. And that's the comment. And also, the other comment is, I concur completely. I think councillor, uh, Davidson, he, in, uh, right to the point. I mean, how can this would be good for environment? And although the idea was, uh, to promote, uh, a better recycling and all that, when you actually have, uh, more trucks on the road. And it'll be confusing to all of us. And talking about confusion. And I also want to, uh, make a comment on, and I think I shared it with staff and they give each one of us on council, uh, some heads up, is when you take away a service, uh, people have been using. Whether it's justified or not, it's a different issue now. But, uh, for people not seeing the blue boxes in front of some of the super mailbox, it's going to be really a big, um, I won't call it big, but it will certainly some reaction. And, and that's why we're talking communication. And I think that's a fairly challenging. Now, uh, we talked about putting notices in the property belong to the city. I wonder if the communication or maybe will be contemplated to go to Canada Post. At some point in time, um, they might either help us, uh, or the public to better understand that, um, the, uh, the, all those mail ad, uh, in a sense, they're providing a service to all of us, but it's really a people's responsibility to take it home. So, um, I hope I don't need a second round, but I just want to, uh, emphasize communication is the key here. Uh, we don't have much choice, uh, other than to do what it is. But I think that communication, I would, I hope, uh, also would targeted our diverse population, considering in multilingual, either in printed material, uh, and other form of communication. Last but not least, I don't need an answer now. I don't know to what extent there may be potential verification, legal or otherwise, because some of the blue box is still in use and until whenever be replaced, still have the city logo on it. So at some point in time, uh, if there are certain things as relating to, uh, disputes, whatever the case may be, claims of that nature, the very fact that we still have the city logo on those blue box might be an issue to harness in the future. I hope not, but those are my comments. I support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
At this time, I'd like to pass the chair back to, uh, councillor Liu.
Thank you very much, councillor Thompson. So next speaker is regional and local councillor DePaula.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with a lot of the comments that were made by other councillors. With regards to the, the, the littering that's happening at, at blue boxes, I mean, that, that's what it is and there'll be a communication. Is there, is there a, a bylaw against littering? I, I know it's impractical to, to enforce and, but can, can the communication also include the fact that, you know, um, for, for some reason, there's a misconception that, um, taking flyers out of your, out of your mailbox, that it's your mail and you're responsible and it's, you know, it needs to be made really clear that what's happening is it constitutes a, a litter, littering and a contravention of a bylaw somewhere. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, um, there, there are two bylaws, actually, that, or three, actually, maybe even, that have clauses about littering, the parks' bylaw, the highway obstruction bylaw, and the waste bylaw itself. I believe all have prohibitions against littering.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just suggesting that maybe in, in the communication, there could be some, some mention of the fact that, uh, that it constitutes littering and, and, uh, it shouldn't, shouldn't happen. Not sure if that'll help, but I have other questions about the contract. Now, we're, we're going to an RFP about this time next year, well, sorry, Q2 next '26. And then, and, and when is that contract to begin? Was there also talk of a one-year extension with Miller? Uh, just not clear.
Um, excuse, uh, excuse me, uh, regional local councillor DePaula. So this is, uh, regarding the contract, it's gonna be the next agenda item.
Okay.
So we're gonna bring forward the next agenda item, then you, you, you can speak on that.
Okay. Mr. Chair, thank you. Thanks.
Will do, thank you. Anything else you want to add, uh, comment? That's it, okay. Okay, next, um, councillor Xu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. And, uh, my first question is regarding the slide 11. Slide 11. And the new policy state, states that this, uh, the city will discontinue all municipal waste collection services from 64 industrial commercial properties, including green bean organics, right? Uh, that's, um, our restaurants include in this category. Just want, just wanna make sure that restaurants.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't believe there's any restaurants in these 64 industrial commercial properties. They're mainly, um, automotive repair shops that do have their own collection services. Um, a lot of them, what they've done is taken advantage of our organics and blue box programs because those are harder for industrial properties to, um, become part of. So, you know, most of the time, they do have their industrial waste picked up by somebody else, but they're setting up blue boxes on organics. Over the years, they've, they've done that and they got collection services. We can, uh, look through these 64 properties and, and give you any feedback if there are any restaurants.
So, uh, through the chair, how about restaurants, uh, how they handle the waste collection, especially for those organics collection in the future? Is that the point?
Um, so through you, Mr. Chair, um, that's a very good question. So industrial and commercial are not part of the residential collection program. We don't have any mandates, neither does the region, to collect from industrial commercial properties. So they do have their own programs, private waste haulers to, to collect waste. I know some restaurants do provide and, and, uh, are part of or take part of, uh, programs to have the food, um, be used either in agricultural purposes or other organics programs. But, um, yeah, definitely not a municipal program.
Okay, good to know. My next comment is regarding the super mailbox. And I'll go for, uh, option three as well, recommended by the city. And I would like to support the motion by Mayor West. And it seems like, because it's based on the principle of fairness. And for me, it's easier to explain to the residents because it's fair to, to the whole city, to the entire city. And, um, it, it could also encourage people to unsubscribe from unnecessary junk mail. And it's good for the environment, so. And from the cost perspective, it's, it could save more cost for the city. But the point is how much we can save. Do you have any figures and how much we can save if, if we go for the option three? How much roughly we can save for the city? And is there any impact for the property tax? I can foresee this is a popular question, if we cut services, because we are talking about cut services. So people will ask, is there the impact or, or, or any benefit from our property tax? That's a crucial question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, that's again, a very good question. So currently, those 375 super mailbox locations are collected at very low cost. Because as I mentioned, uh, Miller's going through collecting a blue box from a residential home and then picking up the container at the super mailbox and then moving on to the next homes in that line. So the cost is, eh, you know, it's no different if they were, if residents were taking that material home, putting in the blue boxes in that neighborhood. Uh, so the very low cost, we estimated it about $8,000 currently, uh, to collect from the 375 locations. The cost saving comes, uh, in the future when we won't no longer have recycling collection trucks going through each neighborhood. So if we were to even do dedicated collection services, meaning a truck driving around from location to location, spending quite a bit of time getting to the next location, the cost increases 30 times. So that cost, uh, is, you know, even just for the 60 locations, um, that producers will not collect from is already almost $50,000. So it's cost avoidance in the future more than anything else with this recommendation.
Okay, so, um, if we have any communication plan to the residents and neighbors, the phrasing, the language would be very critical to explain what's happening because we are talking about cutting services at the end of the day. And, uh, also for the other concern about is, uh, within the transition period, there will be two trucks coming to pick up the green bean and also the blue box. I think it's back to 20 years ago. It sounds like back to 20 years ago. And I think the coordination between the two trucks is crucial. Just like snow plowing and the windrow removal, we have a separate trucks to come. And, and the people most concerned about the time, the time, the time gap be, between the two trucks coming. So I think, uh, the city will work more on the coordination between the two trucks. That's what I'm concerned about. And I can foresee there will be a lot of complaints within the transition period because we make change for the public services. That's what I'm concerned, and this all about my first round. And I will leave the rest for the next round. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, so before I go to the second round, um, I'm gonna ask a few questions and, and also comments. Thank you very much for the, uh, presentation. I know staff, you know, did a lots of work behind this. This is all makes sense to me. No doubt, this is, this is ridiculous. This is a joke and, and, and it's a scam to me. But bef, uh, before I go on, I feel, I have a few questions, so, um, is there any way that we ask the province to delay this for another year? I know the answer, but I, I have to ask, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, uh, it, the, the regulation is already approved and the contract is already awarded to Miller by Circular Materials, so.
All right, thank you. So, um, I concur with councillor Davidson that, uh, I, I don't buy into, you know, subsidizing the BIA. So even though this is called a revenue of 31, uh, uh, 500, but, uh, is, actually is a subsidized. It's not, it's not, it's not a revenue, uh, from BIA. Before I go on, ha, have we reached out to all the stakeholders, um, like the BIA, the churches, um, the daycare and, and all those, um, people, um, to inform them this is coming through you, uh, through, oh, through myself?
Through you, through you, Mr., uh, um, through you, Mr. Chair. No, we have not done any of the communications. We, we're waiting for the direction from council before we can go back to them and let them know about the planned changes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, because I, I'm quite surprised that, you know, the BIA is not here, um, even though they, they still have to pay a few hundreds. But I, I, I don't think, um, we should, um, subsidize 50% of the cost, uh, for the BIA. If we do that, we have to do it to the, the churches, the daycare and everything. If, if, if we gotta subsidize, we subsidize all. In this case, I don't think we should, um, do this. The other comment is, um, I'm not ready to cancel the super mailbox. I totally understand the rationale behind it. I understand the educational part. I understand, you know, this is, you know, supposed to be their own responsibility. But as Deputy Mayor Chen said, you know, this is a big change. And this big change is gonna have a huge impact to the residents. And, and this is one of the things that they, they can see, you know, the textures are, are at work, um, like snow removal, you know? And, and, and if you take this away, I, I, I don't know, um, the reaction from the residents. I understand, but from what I'm seeing from the financial impacts, so if we are not subsidizing the BIA, and I'm sure they're gonna come next week, and, uh, and we will have more saving, it will be larger than 107,000. Sorry, hun, uh, yeah, 107,000, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, so right now, we're, we're recommending a 50% subsidy. So it would be if you wanted the BIA to have, cover 100% of the cost, we would double that. So it would be, uh, the, sorry, 31,500, they would pay 63,000 and that would be added onto the saving.
Thank you. Yeah, the way I'm seeing this is not only that I'm not ready to cancel it, what I'm seeing is I wanna expand it. When I look at the numbers, um, it's, um, 42,900, um, for 60 boxes. So just looking at it, uh, the 10, the 107,000 that we save, if we put it back into the super mailbox, we have another 60 addition, super mailbox blue boxes. And we translate into 10 in each ward. And this is a yearly savings. So what I'm seeing this is 107,000 is so insignificant, like the mayor said. If we, we invest into getting more super mailboxes, blue boxes, um, then every year, each ward can get 10 more. I don't know how, if, if that makes sense to you, but, uh, you know, that's what, that's, that's my thinking goes. So I'm not ready to approve anything today. If, if, if comes to a point, I, I would rather refer it to next week, um, before we make any decision today. So if nobody making a referral motion, I'm gonna pass the chair and make the referral motion. But I would like to bring that out to everybody, um, to think about that. Because it's, this is, this is, this is so visible. This is such a visible surfaces to the residents. And you take away, um, it's gotta be litter everywhere, um, unless we have surveillance camera pointing at all those super mailbox. Otherwise, it's, it's, it's gonna be a mess, no matter how you enforce the bylaw, whatever you say, what education material you have. So that's all my comments. Um, so, um, I'm gonna stop here. I'm gonna go to this next round, second round, um, Mayor West.
Uh, thank you. Okay, just a, kind of, another couple of questions. So in the BIA, the waste is still picked up from the BIA? Not, we're only talking about recycling here, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. The waste and organics are also collected from the ADA businesses in the BIA that we're recommending continued recycling collection for.
So if we canceled the BIA, uh, recycling collection, they would still get waste collection?
That's correct. That's still provided a low cost since we are collecting everything, all the apartments above.
And we wouldn't be charging them a fee. We just cancel the service. They don't have to pay. And we wouldn't be charging them a fee. We just cancel the service. They don't have to pay the fee. And frankly, what'll happen is either they'll put the blue bin out beside the residential blue bins and it'll get picked up anyway, or they just won't recycle. That'll be the net result, right?
Potentially, there are other options that uh businesses can do with their recycling.
But they won't.
Yeah.
I mean, like, the reality is they're not gonna do that. I mean, it it's so, okay, thank you. Sorry to cut you off, but I I feel pretty passionately about that. Um okay, another question. When will, so we'll have. Uh trucks that'll go around collecting yard waste, we'll have trucks that'll go around collecting garbage. We'll have trucks that'll go around collecting organics, so that's three trucks. And now we'll have another truck, which is not our truck. That'll go around collecting recycling when all this happens, right?
Correct.
Okay, when do, and I think you've answered this, but when will the recycling truck? Go around relative to the days where the other trucks are going around. So like on it, on like on a Friday, that's my my day in my area. So I put out my waste on every second week, my recycling and my organics. And eh um but in under this scenario, will the 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 third stream be collected on the same day as the other two streams or or that's yet to be determined?
Um through you, Mister Chair. Uh it is yet to be determined, but all indications are showing they're not changing collection schedules. So recycling will continue on the same on the Friday collection day for your zone.
Because that's a deal breaker. I mean, no one is gonna be putting out waste on on two separate days. That's completely, that's crazy. Um but I mean, you know, it's yet to be determined. That makes me a little nervous. Um uh so just to be clear, I mean, you know, over the nu- number of years, I have advocated that the way that they should have done this, in my humble opinion. Is to uh to continue funding us to continue doing what we're doing. And they, that's not what they've chosen to do. And we've made it very clear to them over the years. Uh at A M O and 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 other um avenues, um that this is, this is would have been by far the the best way to go. And this, for whatever reason, that they've decided has not been the the route to go. Um one more question then. So if, so we have a couple hundred uh. Locations that we can put recycling bins only, not garbage bins, at different areas throughout the community. So and Commissioner, you had said, well, we could put a recycling bin at more trailheads. That actually would not be a bad thing. But the problem is, when you're walking your dog. At a trailhead, you're you you don't have recycling in your hand. You have something else. So if we were to put recycling bins at the trailheads, I mean, they would be picked up for free. But it wouldn't be the recycling that, well, we would also have to have waste collection because we're not gonna just have recycling collection. So how are we gonna work that out?
Through you, Mister Chair. So this is why I said it's a bit of a a possible long-term strategy. Because we're not actually entirely clear on some of the rules um that Circular Materials is proposing. Um so we would have to uh come up with a plan for design uh as we learn more, uh if you wanna add anything to that.
Yeah, that that's correct. Uh circular materials preference is to have garbage and recycling side by side to reduce contamination. But it would mean that we would have to go there anyways. And the savings is minimal. If we have containers, yeah.
Right, cuz there's gonna be waste containers there anyway. I mean, I'm not saying that we wouldn't do this because having. Uh extra locations where people can dispose of whatever they have is not such a bad thing. But I'm wondering if the mitigation on the super mailbox, because remember, there's only a few loc- I mean, relatively speaking, there's only a few super mailboxes. That have been problematic locations that have had this. I just wonder, and I I'm thinking out loud here to some degree, but I wonder if there's an opportunity here to put. The waste receptacles as well, but also the uh super mailbox, or sorry, the recycling receptacles. In areas that are strategically located not too far from super mailboxes. So instead of them being right at the super mailbox, at least we could find a cost-effective way. Of putting them strategically around the neighborhood and making a commitment that we're going to be looking at additional. You know, waste and recycling locations to mitigate the concern that Counselor Liu has. And and I agree, although I still have to say. You know, I get that people are gonna be upset if they've had super mailbox locations. And they're they no longer do. And it it's gonna cause people to be upset. But at the end of the day, it really is inefficient to have. That happen. And particularly under the new regulations, it'll be highly inefficient for us to have to be to be expiring the expense. To pick up from those locations. But I wonder if staff could look into that because that might be a partial, at least. Mitigation or answer to the to the concern that we have about eliminating the blue box um locations. Um Commissioner, did you have a comment on that or or not?
Uh through you, Mister Chair. I would just say that we can certainly look into that.
Okay. But would, I mean, how soon can we look into that?
Um, well. I I don't.
Yeah, um so through you, Mister Chair, the this would introduce a new program to the city. So we currently only have street. Recycling and garbage containers in the downtown core, twenty-four containers. If we are going down this road where we're gonna add street containers, like the city of Toronto does, as strategic locations. It will be a new program cost and we would need to look into that and get some quotes for collection, both installation of concrete pads, containers. And look at collection, of course, separate routes now will be required, much higher cost. We would, we could bring that back uh in analysis. Um but I think the problematic locations are the super mailboxes. And in most cases, we don't see. As much litter from people walking around. We're not as populous as um, you know, the downtown core of Toronto, where you do need those street containers because of volume of people walking around. Most people are walking their dogs and coming home and they can bring that container or that uh pet waste home or use the park containers, which we have. Over thousands of containers in our park system. So um yeah, that that's the one thing I would caution is this would increase cost if we wanna start a street container program.
Right. Okay, well, I'm just trying to find a way, you know, given that we've got lemons to make lemonade, but I'm not sure, given that the the tight cost. You know, savings, which is really insignificant, uh that we have the latitude to be able to do that in a cost-neutral kind of way. So. Okay, I'll, I'm uh I'm done for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um Counselor Davidson?
Thank you. Um through you, Mister Chair. I forgot to ask. Are there gonna be a limited number of blue boxes people can have? Because I see neighbors that have honestly ten blue boxes out there. Is there any limit?
Uh through you, Mister Chair. There is no current limit to the number of blue boxes a person can purchase and send out, similar to the green bin program. No limit. The limit is only on garbage. Uh and we don't foresee there'll be a limit. We don't believe there's anything in the regulation that said. There's a limit of uh per household for.
Thank you. Through you, Mister Chair. I I agree with uh Mister Chair that. It's magical thinking to think that signs are gonna stop people from just throwing their garbage at the super mailbox. And I suspect, uh did I see a slide that said we will. Have staff do cleanups when needed, like targeted clean. That's gonna, is that not gonna spend that hundred and seven thousand bucks in record time? Especially if you're now adding to the regular garbage, you're adding the all the super mailbox cleanup that is gone. So this doesn't, sorry, go ahead.
I I would, through you, Mister Chair, just like to point out that part of the problem with the super mailbox program is I is I. And maybe this is being optimistic of me, but I think of it as the boxes get placed where there's some bad apples. People, specific people who are pulling their flyers out and throwing it on the ground, so their neighbor complains and a blue box gets there. That blue box has tradition, has historically just stayed there. That person who is causing the problem might move. And and that particular location is no longer an issue. And yet that that location's being serviced with a blue box whereas other ones aren't. So that's one of the problems with the the blue box program. There's no indication that the blue boxes really are at the the. The most um uh disturbance, the the ones with the most disturbance right now. So I'd just like to remind everyone of that.
Oops. Thank you through you, Mister Chair. Um so I'm just thinking out of the blue box here, but if there's no limit. Is there any way, and this is what happens in my neighborhood, someone puts a blue box there that's their blue box, they let it fill up and they go take it down and put it at the bottom of their driveway. Could there ever be a community outreach to say, hey, anyone here willing to take that blue box that's sitting beside the mailbox? And drag it over to their driveway, probably people who live quite close to the super mailboxes. I mean, I know that sounds like a logistical nightmare, and maybe I would just encourage it privately up in Ward One, but. The neighborhood benefits from not having garbage all over the place. I think in this instance, we need to consider. The neighborhood might be willing to do a little extra step to make sure that doesn't happen. Because I just don't see how that hundred and seven thousand dollars isn't gonna be spent in the first couple of months. But if we really figure out the cost of sending a Richmond Hill truck. To clean up the garbage around the super mailboxes, that is so inefficient. I mean, i- it's shocking. Anyway, back to the B I A. Um I don't know that we can make arguments that we have to subsidize people because they may not do the right thing. I will be asking to pull the B I A part out as for a separate vote, clause C. And I would also, I I asked the um clerk for his advice, how do we? Is there any way to excise the super mailbox so that we don't have to decide today? And if so, how much time do we have to still discuss solutions? Which I'm sure is not music to the ears to staff who've been working on this for years. But I feel like it's, there's so much here that I can't decide on the super mailbox and B I A. All at once. Oh, refer. So can I refer just the super mailbox and then pull the B I A totally separately, Mister Clerk?
Um thank you. Uh through the chair, I I think I understand the counselor's concerns. Uh she certainly, you know, the recommendation that's on the floor. And actually, maybe I'll share my screen. So the the motion uh the that's on the floor, the staff recommendation, of course, has uh um A through F clauses. Um the counselor has concerns with clause C, the waste management fee in the B I A, eh and clause D. The decision on the um super mailbox recycling program. It's certainly possible to separate out any clause for voting purposes, so you could have a separate vote on any of these clauses uh because they are independent. Uh but there's no real way to only refer one decision, make a decision on some. And refer some others directly to council. I think your your best choice is either to have the vote on this, which is still then subject to council's consideration uh next week. Um or a- as the chair had indicated, uh and we've done in the past, is to refer this staff report to council. Uh without recommendation for a decision next week. Th- those are my recommended options uh to uh to deal with that.
Through you, Mister Chair. Um so just, since this is a Cal meeting, can we vote separately on on D, C and D? With, but it's not binding if some, if we get some great information in the next week, you know, we change our minds and have this vote again next week, correct?
Yeah, so why don't we just refer the whole thing to next week?
Because we're not going, like, I'd like to, I'd like to know from my colleagues what their feeling is on the things that, like the B I A. I would love to take the temperature of that today and see what people think of the B I A. Because next week, we're just gonna be right back arguing the same way. And we're not allowed to talk about anything outside this building, outside this room. So I would like to have a vote at Cal on the B I A. It's not binding. If people wanna change their mind next week, they can, right?
Mister Clerk?
Uh thank you. Uh through the chair, certainly, eh eh anything that happens at committee the whole today will be brought forward to council next week. A member of council is not bound next week to make a decision that they made this week. It's a separate meeting. That's a decision. So they they certainly. You know, you could vote one way this week and a completely different way next week's based on new information. Uh that's the whole idea of sober second thought, uh and you're not bound to that, so.
Thank you. Just a a hint, I I will be doing that when it's time to vote. Thank you.
So there's no referral? Okay, gotcha. Okay, next speaker, Counselor Shu.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um. My first question, my first question is uh regarding the B I A, but I won't repeat it anymore because uh there's so many colleagues talking about this. Already. My 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 last question is about the uh the non-eligible blue box sources. Uh just wanna ask, is uh charities included in this category? Charities, because. My concept is charities is different from nonprofit organizations. How about charities?
Through you, Mister Chair. Um we do have um three nonprofit organizations. We would have to, I don't think we we have that information. We don't have that information with us right now. But some of these nonprofits could be a charity. Uh we could provide you with that list of all the three non-for-profit.
Okay, uh for those non-eligible blue box sources, do we have any mechanism? Or uh let those organization um ask for exemption case by case? Especially for those nonprofit organizations because they are not making profit. And I think if we can have some mechanism for them to ask for exemption case by case, that would be great. Just my advice, just a piece of advice. It's not questions. Thank you so much. That's all about my comments.
Thank you. So next speaker is Deputy Mayor Chen.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. And I I honestly think this is a good discussion. Um and um. And that's the whole idea. Um now, uh through you, Mister Chair, I don't know whether procedurally. Um Mister Kirk raised that uh the possibility. Um if we were going to make a motion today, uh just to receive. Uh automatically, everything will go back to next Wednesday council meeting. Uh through you, Mister Chair. Uh if I would be interested in moving a motion to just receive. Uh would that be an um procedurally acceptable, through you, Mister Chair? Maybe to Mister Kirk.
Um uh thank you. Uh uh through the chair, I. A motion to receive only is is generally in order. I I I would suggest that it actually isn't in this case. Because the motion before you includes the clause to be received. Um so you couldn't actually then make another motion to receive. That would be two main motions of the same uh uh of the same matter. Um at this juncture, you have a main motion on the floor. Uh and the only other motions in that are in order, eh my advice would be procedural motions, like to refer or to defer or uh to amend.
Thank you. Yeah, because uh Mister Kirk did say early on, uh there's a situation there, you just refer. Uh not prefer, just to see if we don't make a recommendation while we pass that stage yet because we do have a motion in the floor. That's fine. Um so. Uh subject to uh uh further deliberation, but uh I I hear about the concern about the B I A. Which is recommendation B two. But then, uh if we were voting today on any of this, uh that would, meaning. Um in my mind, uh voting for or against B two would have to be take the same position as C because they're related. Uh I just wanna bring it out, um if that's what we're talking about. And um I think as a comment, I think we all realize that when um a service already been rendered, delivered. It's certainly um not easy to to take it back or reduce it. And so I I understand everyone's concern. And that's why. Uh really getting back to the further comment, uh future co- uh the early comment I make and some of us that make, communication is the key. Um and Counselor Silverton make it very clear at the beginning, we as a city, we don't bring it forward. It's not our wish or our our direction. It's coming from another body, uh the province. So um. But of course, um that to the extent we can help mitigate uh certain um concerns and potential, we all see it. The uh the the reaction, if you take everything out from the superbox, mailbox. Um so I I think that. Uh either, another option is that, not option, but all of us uh can make our provincial representative or candidates know. This is important. Uh this affected our uh uh our service, uh as well as this is not doing a service to the environment. As well, and I said earlier, considering we have to pay extra uh to launch those communication services. We don't even see the hundred and seven thousand dollar savings. So to the argument is that um. Well, why would not uh uh save us money or reducing taxes? And I think that's the rationale there. Those are my comments. And thank you, Mister Chair, uh for me to uh ask question and also share those comments.
Thank you. So uh Commissioner Steel, uh would you like to comment?
Uh through you. I just wanna comment on the difference between recommendation B two and recommendation C. So recommendation B two is about the city continuing to pick up the recycling for the uh eighty-eight B I A businesses. Recommendation C is about whether we will uh seek a cost recovery from the B I A for providing that service. So they're two different things. If I understood Counselor Davidson. So they're two different things. If I understood Counselor Davidson correctly, uh, her concern is about C, which is about how much we're charging them to provide that service.
Thank you. All right, so next speaker is Regional and Local Counselor DePaula.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, well, there's there's two issues up in the air now that what we're doing with the super mailboxes recycling program and I I uh, I agree with the counselors that are are concerned here. This is a extremely popular where it's being done and it, you know, it, expanding this would would be something the residents would really be grateful for. Um, and I do understand the cost and all the considerations. Just wondering if uh putting a, putting a very large uh recycling container beside mailboxes would limit the number of times that we'd have to collect it. And if it were labeled as paper only and a very large container that could be collected monthly or or um much less frequently, uh, the if if that would help. I I know this has been studied a lot and discussed a lot, uh, but um, expanding that service is what the the residents would would really like. I don't think um having a uh recycling container just in the area would help at all. I think the problematic residents to go into their mailboxes, if they're unwilling to take their mail, all of their mail home and their littering. I think it's very unlikely that that same individual is gonna walk any distance at all and and deposit their recycling properly. Uh, so unfortunately, but uh I don't, I don't think any other system unless it's very easy for people, uh, that that they're going to dispose of their you know, their bulk mail responsibly. And with regards to the the B I A, I think, I think, you know, if they, they're not in attendance today, but if they are here next week, I think i- this is a huge imposition to, for them to be as assessed and another three hundred and sixty-five dollars, um, that that this is going to, you know, these, a lot of businesses are struggling in tough times. And I, I I think it, you know, they're, they're paying for a service that they're currently receiving for free and I I don't I don't, I don't think they're gonna be pleased. I I guess the cost recovery is not, it's not complete, the the amount that's being charged. It's actually costing the city a little more and that's the concern. But really, we're just talking about keeping our our downtown heritage area clean because with without this you know, there, so there's gonna be a mess and and we we have to clean it up regardless. I think we'll be, we'll be back at council trying to, trying to figure out a way to to properly maintain our, you know, downtown heritage center. So, uh, I I don't, I I don't agree with those. I I like what's proposed by staff with regards to the B I A. I don't, I don't think they're gonna be happy, but I think it has to be done and I, I don't support removing the super mailbox recycling program. I, I do know the cost, but I, this is something residents really want. And I I was hopeful that we would be expanding it across the city. I thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Silvus?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all my council colleagues for this discussion. Um, it's been very interesting. I just have a couple of comments on the second round. Uh, in response to Counselor Davidson requesting members of council to speak, speak up. I do support uh B two and C. I believe that it is necessary for us to um, to have this ti- this special, if you want to put that in inverted commas, um, uh, garbage removal for the the downtown, the downtown village core. It's very important. That is a, that is a very specific area where there are basically no sidewalks and uh there, there could be a huge problem if we don't continue that. I understand Counselor DePaulo's concerns about um the three hundred and sixty-five dollars. But again, that's one dollar a day. And um, I, uh, inasmuch as there are businesses that are struggling um, and perhaps that's a discussion also to have with them, perhaps, um, perhaps as a way of of mitigating that. That I I don't, I I believe that they would be okay with um, with putting in one dollar a day. Uh, to ma- to ensure that their garbage is is collected and B, that the down, their downtown village core is kept clean. Uh, because there will be, it'll be a, it'll be a complete snowball effect. If, in my opinion, if we don't do this, there there will be far more complaints from um residents about a filthy downtown core, downtown village core. So we have to keep that in mind, in mind as well. I do understand the the concerns um from other counselors about this. But I I I do believe we've, we've got a situation here that must be dealt with. Couple of other things. Um, with with regard to that, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, to Manager Gau. Did any consultation or discussion, has any consultation or discussion taken place with the B I A in this regard?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, and I'm not specific to this recommendation uh or the fee.
Okay, okay. Um, I I would, I would suggest that those discussions are paramount with the, with Chair Moore, as well as the the, and they can decide what to do with the rest of of the B I A. And I know we have counselors who sit on the B I A as well. And so I think this is a discussion that that can be had with them. And um, the understanding can be, can can be come to, can come to. And and um, I I don't see it as a huge, huge problem. But I do see it as a huge problem if we do not continue the service. Do I want super mailboxes to to have some kind of cleanup there? Yes, absolutely I do, but I realize the constraints we are, we are under. So in that respect, through you, Mr. Chair, to our treasurer, Ms. Lee. Not to put you on the spot, but would this conversation perhaps be something? And and Mayor West, i- is is this conversation perhaps be something that we should be discussing through budget twenty-six? Not to go off topic, but but I think there's a place here. That if if we are going to um retain the blue boxes at the super mailboxes and even increase it, which, which is something that a number of councils have have said they would like to see. And perhaps this is a budget discussion. So either to uh to the mayor or or to our treasurer, I I'm just thinking that perhaps that's how we handle this better.
Mayor West?
It it's a good point. I mean, everything we do is a budget discussion, really, to a large degree, right? But um, but I guess the thing is, you know, the reality is if we are to increase the service at super mailboxes, it's going to cost us more. The question is, do we want it? And and that, you know, if we make that decision at some point during this discussion, then it will have it cost implications for the budget that's coming up. So, um, but I don't think it's anything different than we would normally do. I mean, the budget, it'll, it'll have a cost implication for the next year or the year after is that's budget, not the budget that we're in right at this moment. So, um, but yes, you know, th- this will mean, any any additional money we spend on anything uh, will, will have a a budget implication and it'll be a budget implication in the next, in the next budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not not, I'm not trying to make this discussion any more complicated. But if, if, if that is removed and it's, it is a discussion that, or no, it's not, not if it's removed, sorry. If that is approved, this is approved and it goes forward and it still comes up as a budget discussion. Is there not then place within budget discussions twenty-six for us to have this conversation again? I'm just trying to make things a bit cleaner or clearer.
If I may, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Treasurer Lee, but uh, if we decided to go ahead and do this today and then we refuse to give the budget to it when the time comes. I suppose that really by definition means that the program would be canceled. But um, I I mean, I, that's, that theoretically, and and that's would apply to anything that we do. I mean, we're council, we can, we can make decisions like that when we need to make decisions like that. But um, I think it's in our best interest to have the discussion that we're having now so that we don't have to, you know, add that layer at some point in in the future.
I I I do agree. I do agree with you. Um, Madam City Manager, through you, Mr. Chair, did you want to add something?
Uh, through you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, the mayor actually uh said it the way I would have said it. Uh, any service level that the council sets, we would just include that in our budget submissions going forward. So if you're increasing a level of service, you're increasing costs, we would have to factor that in to the twenty twenty-six budget.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And again, I'm I'm not trying to make anything more di- more, more, more difficult here. I'm just, I'm actually trying to make it a little bit easier. And um, should, should this ultimately pass at council? Then to those counselors who are concerned about this, it can be brought up as an amendment to our budget discussions in twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you like to uh?
Uh, thank you. I I I just, uh, and and I think I need to weigh in on this discussion too because there's two pieces at play that haven't been brought up when it comes to budget discussions. One, there's the very fact that if council makes a decision, it's subject to its own reconsideration rules. More importantly, council is subject to the legislative rules when it comes to the strong mayor powers and budget. So that's, yes.
Good point. Thank you. Next speaker, Counselor Tree.
Okay, thank you so much. I just specifically I want to talk about B I A as uh we all discussed at once. So I'm also a counselor, uh, Thompson. Uh, we are sitting in the B I A as a member. So, uh, B I A is very unique. So, uh, we know there are a lot of business and city in the village core. There are very less parking space. If you're looking for a specific waste management for the individual property owners, will be challenging. Par- parking spaces, collection time. B I A area is really our uh core of village, so there are lots of people driving bad and also wasting theirs. If somehow there are more garbage leaving on the street, it will be a really a damage for our uh city's reputation there. So I would say, uh, uh, because we pay fifty fifty percentage, so we have some kind of cost recoveries. And I I think, uh, in this case, we keep as the current services as it. And we get some cost current back, reduce the further damage of our reputations. Remember, uh, there'll be very soon we're gonna have a big public park near the library. I'm assuming more visitors will be there. If in somehow there's some more garbage dumping whenever it's on the street, there'll be no good for us. So that's my thought. Uh, I I think I will still support this promotion uh in front. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you very much. Uh, through you, the chair. Yeah, let's, I'll start with the B I A. I I appreciate all the the comments from my colleagues. And the the key thing that we got to remember here is that uh, this is something that was forced on us. We didn't have a lot of choice here, but we end up having to determine what's in the best interests here. And what I see is that what's being forced on these individuals here is that they're being determined, uh, that they have, basically, we're, we're, we're making good people bad is what's gonna happen here. We all know that, you know, they already have the garbage pickup, they're gonna get that, they're just gonna not recycle and they'll put the stuff in there. So, so if we, uh, if we don't do something to try and keep them in the recycling program, which is what we want, at least we're gonna get some sort of percentage of them doing that. I have no doubt there's a lot of them that are just putting their recycle in the garbage now, but not everybody. So to me, we have to try and encourage to keep people recycling as much as possible. I I didn't think that, you know, charging them half of it and just supplementing them to to at least encourage this to continue to happen was so bad. If if uh, if somebody wanted to make a motion to make it the full amount uh, instead of the dollar a day, make it two dollars a day, I could probably support that. But to take them right out, I could not uh support that at all. For the super mailboxes, I look at it from the the standpoint, you know, and Counselor Davidson, you made a very good point. You know, if we got some community engagement here happening, we could probably you know, take the, you know, the, there wouldn't be a problem terminating the super mailboxes. Yes, there's gonna be people that, uh, you know, uh, and I can't remember which counselor said it. I is that, you know, if you remove that that box, when they're used to it being there, you know, they're just gonna leave their stuff there regardless. We've seen it when we take the the waste receptacles away from our parks in the winter, what happens? The people that are walking their dogs, where that bin was? That's where they leave their dog poop, you know, and and we find it every day. So we know all we're doing is turning good people bad when we don't do something to to help them. But I, I think there's a a strong possibility that it, you know, if we found somebody like a road watch type person that lives right near the super mailboxes, they could have a couple of extra boxes. Hell, you know, as if it was in my ward, I'd be the counselor, I'd be happy to, you know, pay for those boxes for them so that they can put a box there. When they see it, they'll drag it back, when it gets full, they drag it back over to their house, put another box up. I think this would be a good way to handle it and I wouldn't have a problem with us terminating it from the mailboxes as long as we could find some way to get our community engaged to help us deal with this. Despite the fact that we do know that there are people out there that think that, hey, I pay taxes, you should be doing all this. Well, I'm sorry, folks, we can't do it alone. We need your help. You know, we need community engagement. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. So that's uh my turn for the second round. I'm gonna be very brief. Um, with all due respect, the same applies. Um, you're asking, you're you you, you're afraid that the B I A people would not behave. And then you're not afraid that the residents, you know, you're talking about eighty-eight businesses. Um, but we have hundreds of thousands of residents. I I I, I I I'm sorry, but I I think it's the optics of the whole matter. So I I still not to buy into the B I A because we're not, they are businesses. They are profit-making, whether or not they're making profit or not. But the religious institutions, nonprofit organizations, daycare providers, we're not subsidizing them. So I I I can't support that. Question that I have um regarding the B I A, so now we're asking them to pay three hundred and sixty-five dollars per year. So if we're not subsidizing this fifty percent, so they gotta pay double, so two dollars a day?
That would be correct.
Yeah, so if this motion voted down, instead of one dollar a day, they pay two dollars a day. Through you. No, through myself. To staff.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. So the uh three hundred and sixty-five dollars per year is a uh basically intended to subsidize fifty percent of the cost. So yes, you're right. If if you want them to pay a hundred percent of the cost, then you double that, yeah.
Yeah, so I I I don't, I don't see a big difference, you know, um, one dollar a day or two dollars a day. And as again, I think it's the optics. Um, I I I just can't support this. If if we're gonna support this, I I think we should also support the religious institutions and non, nonprofit organizations and the daycare. The other thing is I think we should take this week to reach out to all the non-eligible sources. To make them aware, I'm sure the uh, the B I A um will be aware. Um, they might not be happy with just fifty percent. They might come and ask for, you know, the whole subsidies. So I I I don't know. I think we should hear from them. I should, I I think we should reach out to the all non-eligible uh sources to get a sense of what what they actually thinking, or they don't mind paying. So, sorry, I have another question. So how did that number, the the three hundred and sixty-five times two per year for each business, how 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 do you get that number?
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Chair. So that number was based on a quote that we received from several, several waste collection providers.
I see.
So they quoted the cost for recycling at seven hundred and fifteen dollars per year, which was then split in half for the businesses in the B I A.
Thank you, yeah. So while we're, we're trying to take care of them, but you know, what if we leave them alone and let them go solicit their own contractor? Thank you, yeah. So while we, we're trying to take care of them, but you know, what if we leave them alone and let them go solicit their own, um, contractor? I, I don't know if that's possible, I, I don't, at least you have to let them try.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that, that's certainly possible, that would be their recourse probably to continue recycling. But just a reminder that the reason the recommendation is the way it is B two is because of the unique situation of those businesses, they don't really have anywhere to facilitate pickup by a private service provider. They only have street access, unlike most of the other businesses in the city.
Yeah, and, and maybe I could just add that our waste bylaw does not allow for private waste collectors to collect from the curb. Now, obviously, we'll have to change that for circular materials and allow them to collect from the curb. But a, a business can't just have a waste truck stop in the middle of Young Street and collect from that business. They would need that truck to collect, collection is mandated to happen on private property for, for anything, anywhere else except the BIA. BIA has that exemption in our bylaw currently.
No, thank you, I understand, but still, it's optics, uh, and the last comment I have is, um, I understand people have concern about this super mailbox, um, um, I would suggest that we at least status quo it for another year. Just want to remind everybody, next year is twenty twenty six. Um, anymore wrap up, um, Mayor, if not, I'm gonna call the vote and we're gonna separate A, B, C, D, E, F. Uh, Mayor West?
Okay, um, yeah, I thought we were gonna defer this, and I, I think we should, actually. Um, because I think, uh, I don't think we're really ready to make a decision on this. But, um, I, I do appreciate the, the conversation that we had, and frankly, this is the reason that, uh, w- we immediately moved to get, uh, committee of the whole back, because I think this conversation has actually changed some of my thinking around this. Um, I think, you know, regardless of what happens here this week, we're gonna be able to have the discussion next week, uh, before it gets finalized. I suspect that the, that interested parties will likely, uh, give us some input. I just wanted to say something, uh, councillor, uh, Davidson, we, we can, like, council members can talk about this, we just can't get together all nine of us in a room and talk about it. But I, I can tell you right now, I will absolutely be reaching out uh, to other councillors to have the discussion about this so that we can understand our positions a little bit more. Uh, I, in this discussion, I'm leaning more actually to, um, cancelling the BIA. Because remember, everybody, this is only recycling, and I mean, it's sad that, that we wouldn't be able to offer the recycling to that group, I mean, I'm not happy about that. But at the end of the day, their waste is still gonna be picked up, it's just the recycling that's not gonna be picked up. So the third option, instead of, uh, continuing their recycling and charging them, I mean, it is a possibility, like all other businesses, they just won't have that service available to them. And I, I actually think that's, I'm starting to lean in that direction. The thing with super mailboxes, I appreciate the discussion and I wanna have more discussion about it, but I think really at the end of the day, um, it, this is not a sustainable program. And we're either, you know, we're either gonna cancel it now, or we're gonna, you know, be faced with a situation later to cancel it in the future. So, um, I, I can't defer it because this is not really my time to speak, uh, it's my wrap up. Is that right, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, through the chair, uh, eh, the mayor, uh, you have the floor, so it is, uh, in your, uh, to make a motion.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna defer it. I, I, I think, uh, refer, defer, I don't know, whatever.
Uh, thank you, I, I would need to clarify, so if, if you're saying defer, uh?
We don't need any more information.
Right, okay, so i- you just, you want this to go to council without a vote, is that essentially what?
Exactly, yeah.
But that's, uh, to refer to council without recommendation.
Okay, I would like to do that. I think that the, um, I, I think this has been a really good discussion. I've actually uncovered a few things here today that I didn't think, uh, I hadn't had a good handle on. So I think I would like to do that, and then, uh, we'll continue this conversation in the week ensuing. We'll likely hear from other interested parties in the week ensuing. Um, and I think that the, the final decision that we make at council next week will, will be a better decision than we would be able to make today. So I think that we should take that advantage of that situation and, uh, and move it off to, uh, to council next week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so we have a motion to refer item eleven point three to the next council meeting. All those in favor? Oppose? Carry unanimously. All right, so my question is, so eleven point four has to be referred to? Uh, no? We can approve it today? Okay, so let's move, uh, on to eleven, eleven point four before we take the lunch break. Eleven point four, we have, uh, regional and local councillor DePaula indicated that, uh, he wanted to speak on this, so.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I, I just want, a couple of questions to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So, um, the staff recommendation is to, is to extend one year with, with Miller, the existing contract? Or with, with some modifications, uh, uh, after this discussion?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct, uh, the recommendation is to use one of the optional years that is included in the current contract, so it's an eight-year contract plus two one-year optional extensions. We wanna use one, one of those two optional years to give us sufficient time to develop an RFP, uh, award the contract, and then have the vendor be able to order new trucks. So with all the delays in the supply chain, it takes now two years for waste collection vehicles or waste trucks to be ordered. So the recommendation is extend the contract by one year and also, uh, amend the cost per ton for the organics to the increase that we mentioned in the slides, and remove the recycling collection as of January first. So extend it, but with the, but also amend the contract with those changes.
Uh, so, so what date would that take the current contract out to with a one year?
Um, so that current contract would be extended from April twenty twenty seven to April twenty twenty eight?
That's what I thought. So the RFP is come, is gonna be ready in Q two to twenty twenty six? For a contract to begin in, in twenty twenty eight, two years later? Like, I understand why maybe it takes us a year to create the RFP, but why would they be bidding on a contract to start two years from the time they, they entered the bids? Is this, is this three-year process now for us to tender out a waste management contract?
Yes, that, that is correct, it is a three-year process. Two, two of those years are needed to order the trucks. So, um, Miller Waste operates anywhere from twenty five trucks in this contract. They will need to order brand-new trucks, and it takes about two years for those to be ready. So they need that lead time from a word, so we would award in Q two twenty twenty six next year if this is approved. And then that gives the vendor two years to receive the trucks, uh, do any modifications needed, and then be ready for that start date with all brand-new collection vehicles.
Okay, so even, even if, you know, two years is required, now, now you're, now you're giving them th- three years, and I, I I don't understand why, um, they would need so much time after a bid. They're, they're, they'd be making a bid based on, uh, what they believe they can, they can deliver to the city. And shouldn't, you, you, Miller's already getting an opportunity to have an additional two years from now to, to, um, adjust their fleets accordingly, and then make this RFP, um, make a proposal for next year. Isn't, isn't there other services out there that, that maybe they, they have the equipment necessary in, for an RFP that we would create a year from now, that they, that a contract could start earlier?
Um, Commissioner?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, so a lot is changing in waste management right now with the contracts, um, coming out from circular materials and everything. So, um, this is, is, it's not specifically for any one contractor, um, uh, as indicated on page four of the report. So it's a year of procurement process, so the first twelve months is us, uh, writing and issuing the RFP, uh, leaving two years of lead time for any vendor who, who is successful to get the trucks. Uh, presumably, right now, most vendors wouldn't have the trucks in their, in their, uh, in their fleet. Does that help?
Well, uh, yeah, I, I do understand now, uh, the thinking in the, in the recommendation. Uh, it's, it's really generous to the bidder and just, uh, it's just been known for a long time that Richmond Hill has a, a contract coming due. And now we're extending that by a year, and, uh, anyone who's, who's, who's prepped a bid has to, has to wait. That, I, I, I guess based on the changes, so it, it's really these legislative changes that extended our normal cycle, and, and, uh, we, we have to give that opportunity for, for the current, uh, person that the current company that's servicing Richmond Hill needs that, that, uh, that extra years. So, no, I, I do understand, I just, well, I just wondered if I was correct with, uh, the dates and the timing, but, uh, thank you for your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, regional and local councillor, would you like to move the staff recommendation?
Uh, I, I, I'm not, not comfortable doing so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so, um, Mayor West?
Uh, thank you. Uh, so notwithstanding, uh, the questions that regional and local councillor DePaulo made, they're good questions, actually, and, and I think that's a good discussion for clarification. But, uh, to me, this recommendation is pretty much a straight line, uh, and it, it, it is, I think it's a, it's a good recommendation. Uh, it gives, uh, our staff, regardless of what decision we make on the other part of this discussion, uh, the time that they need to make the transition from what was to what will be. And, um, you know, given it is a little bit lengthy time for a procurement process, but, you know, I also understand in this particular case, uh, that the reality of that procurement, regardless of this, whoever is the successful bidder at the end, uh, will, will likely needs a significant amount of lead time to, to get their, their house in order, in order to, to service, uh, the contract. So, uh, I'm fine with this, um, I think it's, uh, it does give us, uh, the, the time that we need and the guarantee that we won't have any interruption in service, so I'm happy to see us go ahead and do this.
Thank you. So with a motion on the floor, eleven point four, staff recommendations, all those in favor? Oppose? Carries. All right, so, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, council for, for your comments. Uh, we have four more items, which I don't think it would take a long time, but do you want a lunch break or you want just gonna? No break? Continue? Uh, Mr. Clerk, I promise I'll be very efficient.
Uh, yeah, I, I would just comment to council that we do have a rule that says there should be at least a ten-minute break, health and safety break, uh, uh, after two and a half hours of meeting, and staff will need, so, eh, you know, eh, I, I would just comment that that is the rule in the procedure by law, there's gotta be at least a ten-minute break. Um, and quick con- quick conversations can become very long conversations, so that would be my only comment.
Okay. I'll try my best. Okay, one more. Let's see. Okay, eleven point five, Mayor West?
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I read the report and I read through it, and this is an important one because it deals with safety, uh, of our community's drinking water supply. We get this report every year. Um, I, I actually do find this very interesting, uh, how careful and how diligent our staff are in making sure that our drinking water is safe. I mean, people take it for granted every time they open the tap that, uh, the water's not gonna make them sick, and, and I think in Richmond Hill they should feel that way because, uh, you know, we do a good job making sure that the water is safe. Um, the only thing I thought was missing from this report, and it may just be that I missed it, is, um, was there not a, a part in past reports that suggested, you know, kind of what our overall, um, ranking was? I mean, I know, you know, in, if you read the details of the report, there are a few little, um, i- you know, issues that needed to be addressed, none of which were serious health issues. But I, there was in the past, I thought, a part of the report that's, that said, you know, this is kind of the overall rating, this is the overall result. Um, so I, I wonder if maybe staff could just comment on, on that? Like, like the result, what's the, what's this in a nutshell, uh, this report?
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, the manager of Roads and Water is online to comment. Diogo?
Thank you, uh, through the chair to the mayor, um, this past report, actually, the Ministry of the Environment did not do an inspection, and it's usually through that inspection that you see that rating.
Oh, does that, okay, I didn't know that. So that, does that happen, the ministry only does periodic inspections?
Uh, once a year, once a year, through you, the chair, again to the mayor, uh, once a year, the, the ministry does perform an inspection. And through this reporting, uh, of, through the staff report, the ministry had not completed an inspection, so we did not get a rating for this year.
Oh, what, how unusual is that?
Uh, it occurs from time to time. Uh, the, the inspection did take place after the report, uh, the staff report was completed.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, well, that's interesting, I didn't, I didn't realize that. I mean, I guess, you know, the, the, if you read the report, though, you realize that the, you know, the, the performance that we're doing and the, and the unbelievable amount of testing, you know, both us and the region, and even the, I suppose, the city of Toronto is doing to make sure that the, the water is safe all along the line, uh, does still, um, you know, exist in that report. But I, it's interesting that, uh, it's not done in the same format as I, I've seen it in the past, so that was my question. Okay, thank you very much, those, those are my reports, and I just would say keep up the good work, uh, that the staff is doing. Um, it's very important, and I appreciate the fact that, uh, you know, we, we know that we have a reliable, uh, water system in Richmond Hill.
And you'll be moving the motion, right?
Yes, I will.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Oppose? Carry unanimously. Okay, next, eleven point eight.
Okay, ex- yeah, again, just really quickly, uh, again, this is a good news story, I, I, this is, um, I, I, I'm just, was a little confused. This is a, we're already doing a, a program with Markham with regard to, uh, home energy retrofit, um, i- is this a continuation of that program? Or it's not a new program?
Hello, through you, um, Mr. Chair. This is actually a different program. The home retrofit program that we currently have with the city of Markham is more on the education side, focusing on home retrofit for energy for residents, um, small scale. This new program is an initiative that's gonna be looking at potentially deep retrofit, uh, programming and financing for more home improvements that are larger in scale.
Okay, so this is actually kind of a, an evolution from the first program to this program, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so, uh, what kind of, what do you expect could be some of the potential outcomes that would, that would be available for homeowners if, eh, you know, if and when we finalize this? This is just an MOU at this point, but what's, what's kind of the destination that we're hoping to arrive at?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the MOU is just a document and a condition of the grant that we're gonna get from the FCM to do a feasibility study. So the feasibility study is the joint study that we're doing together that will explore how we're gonna look at providing potential incentives for an LIC program for residents.
Okay, all right, okay, that's fine, I, I just was a little confused on that. I, I think this is really exciting because I think that, you know, if, if we're going to be meeting our community energy and emissions plans goals, we are gonna have to be doing some, you know, pretty heavy lifting and, and some radical work in order to get there. So I, I would presume that this is one of the, uh, initiatives that we would be taking in order to move the ball significantly down the field.
Yes, we're gonna be looking at options in terms of how financing could be provided to residents because we know of the expenses it costs to do home retrofits could range from, say, twenty thousand to potentially eighty thousand dollars. This is gonna be a feasibility study that's gonna outline what our options are that we could provide residents of Richmond Hill.
Where do we, where do we expect that we would get funding for a program such as that? Or is that, is it too early to tell?
Through you, Mr. Chair, ideally, this research that we're gonna be doing will show us and give us options on where we can be acquiring funding. Ideally, through the research that we've been doing, it looks like FCM does have follow-up funding that could be provided as a subsequent, uh, program to this feasibility study that's required to actually attain that funding.
Right, okay. Okay, that's great, happy to move the, uh, the motion, I appreciate the work the staff's doing on this and many other fronts, so, uh, thank you very much.
Floor, all those in favor? Oppose? Carries. Eleven point twelve, councillor Tree.
Yeah, I have very, very simple question. I realize this one is for, only for the Richmond Hill center area. Yeah, I have very, very simple question. I realize this one is for, only for the Richmond Hill center areas. So I I remember H F is for entire city. So my question is very simple. Is this only for uh the Richmond Hill Center or is this for entire city? The scoop of this uh eleven point twelve. Is it pilot or?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is uh to zone Richmond Hill Center in compliance with the Richmond Hill Center Secondary Plan.
So it's just the one section, right? It's not for entire city?
That is correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Right, thank you. You, you're gonna move the motion? All those in favor? Oppose? Carry unanimously. Okay, saving the best for last. Okay, Counselor Davidson, your member's motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Um I would like the clerk to please read the motion. Um this is, uh but first, uh I have to make an amendment. The report date should be April sixteenth, not March. Please. If I said those things in the right order.
Uh, thank you. Uh with the chair's indulgence, uh it's moved by Counselor Davidson. Whereas the city of Richmond Hill is committed to fiscal responsibility, transparency, and the continuous improvement of municipal operations. And whereas the city strives to deliver services and projects that maximize value for taxpayers while effectively meeting the needs uh and expectations of the community. And whereas the city's continuous improvement initiatives must play a vital role in streamlining operations, improving service delivery, and optimizing the use of taxpayer dollars. And whereas maintaining transparency and accountability necessitates regular reporting to the city council and residents on efficiencies, cost savings, and service improvements. And whereas this motion reinforces council and the city's commitment to fiscal responsibility, transparency, and the continuous improvement of municipal operations. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to prepare a presentation on Richmond Hill's continuous improvement journey, including but not limited to efficiencies identified and implemented, service improvements achieved, results resulting cost savings and financial impacts, opportunities for further enhancements, recommendations for sustaining and expanding continuous improvement efforts across all departments, and ongoing and upcoming projects planned for twenty twenty-five and beyond. And two, that the staff presentation be presented to council by April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five for review and discussion.
Thank you. That pretty much sums it up. This is just an opportunity for council and residents to learn. We understand every tax dollar really matters, and does this, how does the city reevaluate? Are there cheaper ways to do things, better ways to do things? How can we maximize the dollars we have when we know that there are 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 impending shortages on what we need to spend and what we have? So I think everyone in the city looks forward to hearing from Richmond Hill, the city, what we're doing to maximize uh efficiency and maximize the bang per buck. Uh that's all.
Thank you. Any comments? Mayor West?
Uh this is an excellent motion, and thank you, Counselor, for bringing this forward. I I think, you know, like the discussion we just had a little while ago, uh this council operates in a way that we can have difficult discussions and and really delve into and and uh, you know, be thorough in in uh what we do and while working together. But I I think one of the things, so I, so just sorry to finish that thought. So I think, you know, having this discussion at council is is going to be important, and I look forward to that. But one of the things I I will say as as mayor, I I I am constantly in touch with um staff about, you know, uh budgetary uh issues and items and so on. And I know that staff does do a lot of work um when they bring recommendations forward and a lot of bud, a lot of work during budget time. I mean, Gigi and and her staff um are constantly looking over numbers and and finding ways to do things better. I know we have our lean program that that works uh really well. But I have to say that that even with me knowing these things that go on and and having good communication with staff on this, I I probably not aware of all of the things that uh is, are built into the culture in this um city to, you know, make sure that we are using cost uh our our, their taxpayers' uh dollars efficiently. So I think this um motion does give an opportunity for us on April sixteenth to be hearing from staff on the suite of things that go into uh, you know, making sure that we are being efficient, making sure we are doing the things that we need to do. So um it's a great um motion, and it's it's at a really good time before we start getting into the actual budget cycle for next year's budget, and I appreciate Counselor uh Davidson putting this in. I know this has been some work for you uh to put this together, and I think this will be a really good ensuing discussion uh in April. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay, we have the great motion by Counselor Davidson on the floor. All those in favor? Oppose? Carry unanimously. Thank you. All right, so uh motion to adjourn. Mayor West, all those in favor? Oppose? Carry unanimously. Thank you very.